Yes.
I don't know if I'm part of the meeting or not.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Education meeting. This is Monday, December 7th, 2020. It's just after 5:00 p.m. and I want to call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to here tonight for the LSIC and for other presentations tonight. So, thank you for being here and thank you for being part of our meeting. We appreciate you putting your time out of your schedules away from your families to be with us tonight. So, thank you very much. Dr. Murphy is not with us in person tonight. He is here virtually and Mr. Murphy also is here virtually and is not in person. So, I would like to ask Mr. Dengr, if he would lead us in the flag. So, everyone, please stand.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. I appreciate that.
Praise.
Certainly special meeting.
Thank you.
Please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
This is a very important day in our history as Johnny has mentioned. We want to thank all our folks that would serve then and have served since that time to make our country a very special day. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion with Dr. Gopan a second on Mr. Buckworth to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? If there are none, all is in favor, say aye. It carries unanimously. The first part of our meeting is the LSIC and I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Don Dengr and he's going to get us started with the LSIC. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Queen. This evening, we have the Hedgesville area principals and their team consisting of teachers and counselors and LSIC members with whose parents and members. And I believe they have at least one senior team. So, we certainly appreciate all them being there, even though it seems like it was a long, long time ago. The Hedgesville region was the first region to present, do the presentation to our board. I think that was about just a little under a year ago back in January and today are doing the presentation. This year, we've had the opportunity to hear from the Orange County, from the Mussum region, previewing the Hedgesville. I think the moment that they were able to do this last year, to hear some updated information concerning direction that they and their team had in that part of the year. At this time, I'm going to hear technology guru.
Melissa, can you hear us?
Thank you, Dr. Queen. Thank you, Mrs. Gallagher. And good evening. We will go ahead and get started. Welcome to the 2020 Local School Improvement Council presentation of the Hedgesville area schools. Board members, senior staff, and esteemed community members, we want to take a moment and thank you for your continued support of our Hedgesville area schools. We're a large district with a singular feeder pattern of one primary school, one intermediate school, one middle school, and one high school and part of a growing community slated to welcome 300 new homes within the year and the students within those homes. My name is Melissa Holland and I'm the principal of Hedgesville Elementary School. And I'm joined this evening by two outstanding educators from Hedgesville Elementary, our guidance counselor, Mark Kegel, and a first grade teacher, Mrs. Beth Lyons. First, I just want to review our enrollment information with you. Currently, Hedgesville Elementary enrolls 597 students with 17 additional offsite pre-case students. What you can see from the screen in front of you is our brick and our click students are distributed with 68% of our students currently in brick and 33% of our students in the click environment. And this reflects changes made and requested by caregivers after the first nine weeks. At that time, Hedgesville moved from about 66.5% of our students in brick up to the 68% back to the brick environment. These numbers reflect our fall benchmark scores at Hedgesville Elementary. You'll notice on the left-hand side of the screen, the second grade math and first grade math fall scores. As far as distribution of math scores, they are very typical for a fall assessment with our benchmarking program of STAR. We do have a slight increase in our tier two and our tier three students and we believe that that's from the early release of students in March. But in general, these numbers are incredible. There's something to be celebrated. And for the students who fall in the tier three categories in both reading and math, we've been working through positioning additional interventionists for those students, whether they're in the brick or the click environment. In the upper right-hand portion of your screen, the first grade reading STAR data is only reflective of the 16 students who were able to qualify for the threshold to perform on the reading assessment. So, what that means is 83% of our first grade students actually participated in STAR early literacy in the fall versus STAR reading. And what early literacy assesses is phonemic awareness, phonics, and blending, that early literacy kind of development. Typically, in the fall, we want to see more students participate in STAR reading for first grade and have a more, a wider gap between our early literacy participants and our reading participants and definitely see more, more kids in the reading band. But certainly with the early release of students in March, we understand why those numbers are a little bit different this year and are doing specific steps to bridge the gap with the deficits that we saw at the end of last year. Those specific steps that we're enacting are part of our LSIC priorities this year. There are two focus areas that the LSIC is focusing on at Hedgesville Elementary. The first of those being on an alignment of curricular priorities. Earlier this school year, we received information from the county and the state on recovery standards and which of those standards need to be taught to students to recover the skills lost when we released in March. So, we took those recovery standards. We also took prioritized standards that we prioritized as educators in the classroom and created our own Hedgesville priority standards. Grade level teams are currently working through those and their finalized list is being presented to the LSIC for review. Our second priority is the prioritization of behavioral and social emotional supports for those students who are within the classroom environment those three days a week. So, our highest needs students who attend school want a prioritized schedule. They also have prioritized behavioral support needs. And so, the special educators in our building have joined together and created a plan to address those. And the hope is that by presenting this to LSIC, the LSIC can work through ideas and a plan to present, present this information to our community and our families. Because whatever priorities we need to focus on within the school, then we also need that focus to be there at home as well. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Mark Kegel, our Hedgesville Elementary full-time guidance counselor.
Good evening. I appreciate being here. Looking at our first screen, what this is showing you is a comparison of our first nine weeks attendance compared to this first nine weeks of this year. And as you can see, our overall attendance has improved slightly, but it is a positive. And our chronic absent rate, I think, is significantly improved compared to last year. So, they are two positives for us that we want to continue that trend through the remainder of this year. Most of our emphasis lies on those students who are identified as chronic students. And what we do is identify those students from the previous year and place them in what's called our SWAT team. SWAT stands for Students Working Absences and Tardies. And if you look at the next screen, what it'll show you is on a normal school year, we would meet with those students weekly where they would stamp a calendar card for improved attendance. And then, at the end of nine weeks, we would reward those students accordingly. This year, we're doing that virtually. We meet with those students virtually and then we award them virtual badges into their attendance folders that can be viewed by themselves and their parents in Schoology. And then, we also award them after nine weeks with virtual badges, again, accordingly. This year, we've had 37 students who are listed as chronic in our SWAT club. And of those 37, 19 had perfect attendance this first nine weeks. And the majority of the remainder, I believe it was 13, had two or less absences. So, this program is successful. It's been successful since its inception. In fact, on average, our chronic SWAT students miss 362 less days per year. And last year, they missed 400.
Melissa, I believe Mark's screen has frozen.
Mark, can you hear me?
He and Beth have a backup plan for if this were to happen. So, I think he'll be back with us in just a moment. But what he was going to share is that the SWAT kids last year in total, total numbers had almost 400 less absences than the previous year. So, this is a program that Mr. Kegel has put in place. It's been very, very successful. And I give him full credit. There he is. He's appearing on a, this man's amazing, folks. There he is on another screen entirely.
Sorry, I ran over to Ms. Lyons' classroom. I didn't know where I finished. Just the necessity for more homeschool communication has come about. And I can tell you, our teachers have done a fantastic job trying to reach out to parents through Schoology, through emails, through phone calls. But one of the things we've always prided ourselves with here at Hedgesville are home visits. And the frequency of them have increased fourfold. We've done well over 20 home visits in these first nine weeks. And that includes before school, after school, Saturday. We've gone to three hotels already within the first nine weeks. And the underlying premise behind our home visits is that when you talk to these parents, they share with you that sometimes through their educational experience themselves, they had a negative experience. So, they already have some defenses put in place and they're less willing to return your phone calls or respond to emails and certainly not to come in and sign paperwork or have a meeting. So, we find that if we can go meet them on their home turf, if you will, those defenses drop a little bit. And if you can pair that with bringing something that benefits the child or the parents, they're more likely to see you as an advocate rather than an adversary. And by bringing something, I don't necessarily mean food or clothing, but if you bring something as simple as an iPad password, forgotten textbook, a project aware application so they can get mental health services for their child. The home visit also allows you to assess their situation so you can match and pair a community service that would best meet their needs. Our home visits also allow us to put eyes on the child that a teacher may not have seen for a week or even two weeks. So, it does bear fruit for us. We have more parents responding after we make home visits. A quick example of a true life one, last year, we had a boy when we went virtual who's living with grandparents, was not logging in much at all. So, I took Mr. Frye, our assistant principal, out there and we spoke to the grandparent through the truck. The grandparent was a little defensive, but the same pattern happened this year. So, I took the teacher. And again, we stayed in the truck, but the grandparent was a little more open to listening to the teacher. Two weeks later, I took Mrs. Holland. And while I played tug-of-war in the yard with the dog, Mrs. Holland was on the porch talking to that grandfather. And wouldn't you know, the next few days and weeks, that boy started attending school more regularly. And that grandparent came to school for the first time to sign paperwork for that student to start special ed services. So, you know, even though it doesn't maybe bear fruit right away, it's going to lay the foundation and groundwork when that child goes to our feeder school Tomahawk, that people are more willing to talk with you. Also, our home visits, on a lighter note, help us as colleagues get to know each other. I discovered that Mrs. Holland can make a beautiful three-point turn in a cow pasture. And she realized that I can distract a pit bull long enough to make it safely to a front porch. So, it's been one of the positives. I'm about done with my part. Ms. Lyons, one of our great hybrid teachers, will be speaking to you next.
Hi, I'm Beth Lyons. What you're seeing behind you is actually what my students see every day when I meet with them online. I am one of the hybrid teachers. So, that means I am teaching reading to first graders for two different, basically two different classes, the brick students and the click students. And my counterpart, Kelsey Murphy, does the math for both the brick and the click. So, there have been positives and there have been challenges over the start of this school year. One of the challenges has been Schoology. It was a learning curve for me as a teacher. The only thing I had used Schoology for was to put in grades. And all of a sudden, I'm creating folders. And my counterpart, who teaches another section of reading, is creating things like task boards, like you see here on the screen, where students can click and listen to stories and have access to videos to go over sight words and things like that because we're not face-to-face with the students and we need to provide more opportunities. The other thing that we've done to make things easy for both first graders who've never used Schoology before and their parents is we have put things in folders so that a parent knows that when they click on reading or math, the very first thing they're going to see is a red folder and that's your assignments for the week. And then, when you click that red folder, you will see Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So, kids know, hey, this is, what day of the week is it? This is what I have to choose. My math counterpart did an amazing job at making sure the students who were brick knew how to submit assignments and take attendance and do all of those things while the kids were with us in school so that when we were on a remote situation, we didn't lose as much because the students knew what they were doing and they could show their parents. So, those have been some of the challenges, but also the good things. We're working, I'm working with small groups, both before my regular meeting and after my regular meeting, so that I can meet those students where we are, where they are. We're trying to support parents without making things overwhelming for them so that they feel like they're being supported with their child's education. And for me, the reason I'm a first grade teacher, the most exciting thing has been all year watching those, what I like to call reading switches, turn on. Every time I see one of those turn on, either whether the child is brick or whether the child is click, I know I've built a reader. And once they're, they see themselves as a reader, then it becomes easier for them to practice. They don't get as frustrated. They view themselves, they go from, well, I can't read, to I can read. And then, they're able to do more and more. And if you go on to the next slide, the thing that has made this work is teamwork. I work with a great team of four people, two of us doing math, two of us doing reading, and we've supported each other. We've taught each other things. We share the load so that we are able to meet the children and meet the needs of the families and not lose our minds in the process because we help each other. We couldn't do it without the other. So, with that being said, I'm going to introduce Mr. Tyson, the principal at Tomahawk Intermediate School.
Good evening. Welcome to the Tomahawk portion of the presentation. I'm Ty Tyson, principal at Tomahawk. And joining me tonight, who also will be presenting, will be Ms. Caitlin Thomas. She's our guidance counselor. And Michaela Chris will be presenting. She's one of our fourth grade click teachers. And then, we're going to also hear from a parent's perspective. Ms. Sarah Hamlin is joining us and she's going to share some things of being a parent of some click students. And so, just to start off, I just want to give you a glimpse of what it's looking like at Tomahawk. And despite, you know, all the things that seem to be crashing down around us, we're still focusing on those main things. My priorities are attendance and character and effort. And each of the presentations tonight will kind of address how we're trying to accomplish those things. And, you know, this world surely is a little different. We found ourselves at school, and just like any other school in this nation, using a lot of terms that we didn't really use so much before in the school system, like telework and my VR spot and asynchronous. And I've listed them on the bottom of that slide there. And drive-through, I mean, we've had drive-throughs at Tomahawk to, you know, collect things from students and to send out things to students. And some of us have experienced quarantine. We haven't had to do that before in education here lately. And we've passed out, as you can see on the screen there, 85 hotspots to students who just don't have a good internet connection. So, we're trying to keep them connected with hotspots. If you look at the upper left-hand, you can see that we have 590 students at Tomahawk, 366 currently are in brick, 215 click. We also have some virtual and even one homeschool student who takes a couple of classes. And twice a week, we serve 105 families a food delivery via the school bus. And you can also see that the breakdown of our teachers, 26 of our classroom teachers, 16 brick and 10 click. So, that's kind of what our world is looking like. And I'm going to show you some test scores that are actually from 2019 on the WVGSA because that's basically the last time that we had, you know, that assessment. But if you want to take a glance at that for a moment, there's third grade from 2019. And you'll notice that, you know, we're, we're pretty happy with the third grade scores. We're the, the bar there in the blue. And, you know, we were certainly above the average and we're happy about that. And I want you to remember this group because those scores you're looking at currently are our third, were our third graders in the 2019 spring assessment. And they are now our fifth graders. In a few moments, I'm going to show you some of our fifth grade scores from the STAR assessment. But just to give you a summary, that was 2019 third graders. The next slide is our fourth grade results from 2019. And you can see that, you know, the math scores were not as good as we certainly would have liked them to be. Those students are now sixth graders. So, hopefully Elizabeth Adams has a plan for those guys. But fifth grade scores from 2019. And, you know, again, we're looking at the blue bar. We really were pleased with our reading scores at that time. But that was then, and this is now. And in the fall, we took the first round of the STAR assessment. And the STAR, you know, there's several different features that you can pull from that. And one, it kind of gives you an idea of the percent proficient of our students. So, that's the, the data that I pulled. And so, this is our reading assessment. This is where we're starting out for third, fourth, and fifth grade. You can see the percent proficient. Usually, if you're around 50% proficient, that seems to be a decent score, although we certainly would like it to be a lot better than that. And then, if you look at the next slide, this is our math assessment for the fall, starting out. And, you know, math is often a weak area, an area that we're always focused on and trying to improve. Anything encouraging I can say is, you know, don't get too worried about those fifth graders. You see they're at 23% proficient. Those were the third graders whose GSA scores I just showed you a couple of minutes ago that actually were very nice. So, we know we've got some areas to focus on and we're certainly coming up with some strategies to try to improve not only reading, but also math. We've got interventionists that are working with our students, whether they're in person or remotely. We have a couple of different areas using our librarian and our computer teacher to do math bell ringers so that every, just about every class you go to, well, in this case, teachers are going to them, they're being presented with some kind of a math type of activity, whether it be a bell ringer or even in phys ed class, the focus is math. So, we're certainly doing some things to try to close the gap. Starting in January, all of our teachers are really going to be focused on the program called Edmentum, which aligns with the STAR data, kind of meets kids where they are and gives them some basically practice to close the skill gap. So, we've got some things in place to try to, you know, make sure we're improving math. And, and right now, that pretty much sums up my portion of the presentation. I'm going to turn this over to our guidance counselor, Ms. Caitlin Thomas.
Hi, everyone. So, I'm Caitlin Thomas. I'm the guidance counselor here at Tomahawk. So, on this slide, we're looking at our attendance. So, this is the attendance from 2019, from October through March, before we had COVID and we went remote. So, on the left side is our chronic absent rate, which we, our goal is for it to be below 10%. So, as you all can see, early in October, we were doing really well. And then, it slowly did increase above 10%. And then, on the right side, you'll see our daily attendance until March. And the goal for our daily attendance is above 95%. So, we kind of had the same thing happen where in October, it, we were really well, we were above 95%, but then it slowly went below. And we do see that that's just because we did have a lot of students who were sick and missing school because they did have an illness. And then, of course, we have COVID that happened. But if you look on our next slide, this is our attendance through November of 2020. So, currently, our daily attendance is 97.16% as our chronic absent percentage is 6.44%. So, we are meeting the goals that we have set for our chronic absence and our daily attendance. So, and I started thinking about, you know, what are some things that maybe we're doing to try and help our attendance? And I know that this past few months, we have been, you know, teachers, myself, my co-counselor, Megan Boyd, who is also split between our school and Hedgesville Elementary, and then our administration, we've been contacting families and making sure that they, you know, just asking what we can do to help and making sure that they are coming to school because that's really, really important. So, on this next slide, we're talking about what about school culture? So, like Mr. Tyson said, you know, attendance, character, and effort, that is one of our main, our main goals here at Tomahawk. And in order to promote attendance, character, and effort, it's important that we have our students know what our expectations are while at school. So, we do have brick students and we do have click students. And all of our teachers have communicated either a schedule, a classroom expectation, something where the students know what they need to be doing. And while we are in school for brick, we do have our students say our Tomahawk mission statement. So, that's just a daily reminder of, you know, while we're at school, while we're at Tomahawk, this is what it means to be at Tomahawk. Also, we provide Oveius lessons. So, this is a 15-minute lesson provided by the teacher. I am the coordinator for Oveius. So, I work with Elise Gregory. And pretty much, we, so we have book discussions this year. So, in third, fourth, and fifth grade, all of our classes are discussing the same book. So, that way, it's a continual discussion about anti-bullying and bullying prevention. So, it's never, you know, a one month and done type of thing. Like, we want to make sure students know, like, this is what bullying is. This is what you can do if this is, if bullying does happen or if you see bullying. And then, also, as a counselor, one of my roles and along with working with the staff and teachers is providing support for our students. So, one way to do this is making sure our students attend. So, Task Force is essentially the sister program to the SWAT program that Mr. Kegel was talking about. With this program, we are using the Zoom WVE to try and make sure that we are targeting our chronically absent students. So, those, making sure that our percentage is below 10%. So, what we do is we've been contacting students. And for those that have continued to come to school, they do get incentives. So, I have prizes. So I have prizes for if they have a perfect week. I have prizes for if they miss three days or less every nine weeks. And then at the end of the year, if they miss twelve days or less, we'll have a celebration. So at this point with, you know, the, the end of the year is definitely, we're in the works for that right now. But for our Click students, we have been giving them badges online if we are removed. And then for our brick students, they've also been receiving badges. But if we are in school, they do get an actual physical prize. So it could be something like a pencil or earbuds or a sticker. And then we also have the backpack program to support our students. So for that, we, it's pretty much, it's a weekend food bag to, to give to students who are in need. We have thirty-eight students on our backpack program. And currently, our brick students are receiving that, those food bags in their classroom. And then for the Click students, I'm utilizing Google Voice to be able to contact the families for what's best for them to pick up. And the same thing goes for the brick students if we are on remote. So and then finally, you know, we're, we're using our social emotional learning. For those students, you know, we're providing classes, class lessons, groups and individual counseling. For the class lessons, I'd definitely like them to be face to face if we can. However, they are being posted on Schoology. So there are lessons that include videos, discussion boards, things that the students can print off and work on at home. Our groups are on Schoology and we do have four groups. So we have the Worry Warriors, which is about anxiety, our social skills, so hashtag friendship goals. We have Banana Splits, which is about divorce and family changes, and then our Military Kids. So and the same thing for these, these lessons are posted on our Schoology discussion boards and they include videos, discussions and fun activities. So, I mean, we've been doing a lot of things definitely to help our students who are remote because we just want to make sure that they are connected, especially with one another and with our staff. So and then finally, we have our positive behavior initiatives at Tomahawk. And this is our bucket filler program. And so far, we've had a hundred and one nominations for our bucket fillers. So what they do is they nominate someone who has been a bucket filler, which is someone who has been kind, maybe even helpful, someone who did something and they weren't asked to. So they fill those out and then we announce those nominations. And then we also have our brag bracelets, which is essentially our teachers bragging on our students. And then those students get announced as well. So those are some of the things that we've been doing at Tomahawk. So I think I'm going to pass it on over to Mrs. Chris, our fourth grade teacher.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Chris and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Tomahawk Intermediate School. I'm here to share with you my experience of being a Click-only teacher this year. If you can see behind me, this is where I, I put up a Christmas winter fireplace for my kids to make our virtual classroom a little bit more cozy. They, you should have seen their faces light up when I unveiled our Christmas fireplace earlier this week. They were like, how did you do that? So I'm always trying to do little fun things like that to kind of make them feel welcomed. But anyway, anxious, fearful, overwhelmed, confused, defeated, exhausted and frustrated. These are all very real emotions that I experienced as I began the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, my third year teaching fourth grade at Tomahawk. While I knew this year was going to be different than any other, I wasn't fully prepared for the roller coaster of emotions that it would actually prove to be. The early weeks of Click learning were nonstop work. I couldn't shut my mind off. I went to bed thinking how I could have done things differently, better. I woke up wondering what unknowns I would face that day. I worked before school, during school, after school on lesson plans and trying to make Schoology easier for my fourth graders and their families to navigate. This went on for weeks. I know my students felt some of those same emotions that I was feeling. But as you know, kids are resilient and teachers don't give up. I spent countless hours preparing my virtual classroom via latest technologies. I quickly became somewhat of a, a website designer, if you will, with my interactive banners and graphics that I hoped would make the virtual learning experience a little more enjoyable for my students. School isn't meant to be virtual. Kids aren't supposed to interact with their peers through a screen. But this is the new reality that has taken form in our society and I wanted to make it as pleasant as I possibly could. For a teacher who was trained to do their work in a traditional classroom setting, there's no roadmap or manual for all the changes and unknowns that we faced this school year. It's sort of become a blanket statement for the current times, but we truly are all in this together. I knew I was not alone in feeling scared and unprepared. Every teacher in America was feeling what I was feeling and this was somehow comforting. Educators have truly been pioneers for a new way of life and learning. I like to equate our experience to a new technology that's just been released. Is that technology perfect at first? No. Are there hiccups and roadblocks along the way? Absolutely. But just like the engineers that design those technologies, teachers are creative, conscientious problem solvers. We work to get the job done. I've seen nothing, nothing less than this in all of my colleagues, those who are brick or Click only and those who are some sort of superhero in doing both. It didn't take long to train my brain to be a virtual teacher. I've had to channel my creativity into different modes, more virtual modes, with graphic designing and digital interactive lessons. Emailing, chatting and video conferencing became the main mode of communication with my students. And though it was strange at first, we've all adapted. Amidst all this, the teaching community is clouded with doubt about whether or not students are learning effectively through virtual methods. The answer to this, from my own experience as a virtual teacher, is an affirmative yes. Our children have grown up with technology. And while there are many differing views on this topic, in our current situation, it's proving to be beneficial. My students know how to operate an iPad. They know how to use various apps and how to follow directions. Sure, I've had to teach them how to create a Word document and how to take a screenshot and edit it and upload it, but they're quick learners. With every new challenge we face, we troubleshoot. I create tutorials to share with them and we collaborate real time through video conferencing. We've had very little trouble in the grand scheme with technology because they're already pretty familiar with it. I maintain a very organized virtual classroom and I prepare my students with a very detailed lesson outline for each subject every day. If students know what is expected of them and know where to find their assignments, they typically have little to no problems completing us and completing and submitting those assignments. Organization has proven to be our key to success. Our daily schedule is consistent. We meet live twice each day and follow a very predictable routine throughout those live meetings. I pre-record myself teaching my lessons and I upload those lessons for students to view. The expectation is for students to view those pre-recorded lessons and complete accompanying assignments on Schoology before meeting live with me, where we review and extend upon the topic that was covered in the recorded lesson. A few of my students' schedules allow for them to more easily complete their work asynchronously because of the way I have my classroom set up. That works. If a student is sick or unable to attend a live meeting, they do not risk falling behind because all lessons have been recorded and uploaded to Schoology. One of my biggest worries about virtual teaching was not being able to create and foster a sense of community. In a traditional classroom, conversations would be had constantly in small and large groups. Friendships would be created and social well-being would flourish. I've tried to foster as much of this as possible in our virtual classroom by creating open-ended discussion board questions where students can post their initial response and then respond to their peers. They have a lot of fun with these and I often see very encouraging comments to their peers. I frequently see phrases like, "I agree with you for this reason." "Oh, I didn't even think of that." And, "Hey, that's a great idea." I also try to let them interact with each other while we're live through designated share time and discussion. I made it a priority to learn each one of my students' names from the very beginning. And I'm always trying to learn, I'm always trying to ask questions to learn more about them and to get them, get to know them better. After every live meeting, I offer to stay live for any questions or comments and it never fails. I consistently have four or five students to stay over to show me their pet or to, to share a funny family story or to show me their origami butterflies. Even though I've never met several of my students face to face, I feel like I know them all so well. Until the day we can all look back and say, "Remember when we taught during the pandemic? It was chaotic, but we all learned so much." I will continue to give my students my all. I will continue to build a virtual community to the best of my ability and I will continue to learn alongside my students. Thank you, guys. And it is now my honor to introduce to you a parent of some Click students here at Tomahawk. We have Sarah Hamlin.
Hi, guys. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm a parent of four students at Berkeley County Schools. They're in grades kindergarten, which is at Hedgesville Elementary, third grade at Tomahawk, and then I have two students at the middle school in both sixth and eighth grade. Due to unique circumstances prior to this year, we felt that it was best for our family that we operate in a Click classroom environment just because there were so many unknowns at that time. So being that we have limited access where we, to internet where we live, we weren't really sure how we were going to make this happen. Just like Ms. Chris stated, there were just so many uncertainties surrounding everything from the teachers to the parents to the students. And so this is how we made it work. As you can see on the screen, I set up individual stations for each one of my students. It kind of created their own work environment where they could focus on the things that they were learning. I like to keep them all in the dining room with us together because I need to be in the same place with them to make sure everybody stays on task, everybody stays focused. We start our morning, we're able to get up, eat breakfast together. And then my middle schoolers get started a little bit earlier. And then I am, I get my younger ones situated. And they're not allowed to eat in our classroom. They have a drink with them. But they've each created a different, unique workspace that kind of works for them and keeps them enclosed. They stay focused in their area. At the bottom, you can see Michaela. She's in third grade at Tomahawk. She has Mrs. Stevenson. And she, at the beginning of the year, when we picked up her packet, she had so many items already included with everything. And she had passwords set up that were laminated. So we keep those up there. I mean, everything's easily accessible to her. Again, it's not perfect, but we make it work and my kids have been thriving in this environment. And we've had to learn Schoology. I'm not a huge fan, but again, we make it work. And I'm learning along with the kids. We have cool pads. And each one of my kids' schools have been gracious in providing each one of my kids with a cool pad because unfortunately, we can't connect more than one. I know you're supposed to be able to, but we haven't where we're at. It just doesn't work. So each one of my kids have their own cool pad. The technology department at Tomahawk was amazing. At all my schools, they've been amazing. We have two iPads, two Chromebooks. We've done drive-through pickups to pick up supplies. Everything is so well organized. I just, I can't say enough wonderful things about the schools, the administration, the staff, how they're setting things up, how they're organizing things. They're making this work. And I know for my daughter, Michaela, her assessment scores, I was anxious to see those, to see where she would be at. And it shows that she's thriving in the classroom. I was sent, I don't have them on me, but I was sent her current scores by her teacher this morning and it shows the growth and it shows that what we're doing is working. I feel like there are a couple of things that are necessities in our household. Headphones are definitely a must. We have to have those in order for everybody to work. I've seen how the teachers have used fun and interactive ways to try to bring some type of socialization to my children and the other kids in their classroom. They've done life scavenger hunts where they've found stuff within their home. They've done, Michaela did a biography project and she got to create her pumpkin. They did a presentation online to her entire class. Her teacher has actually, she will give up her lunch break and sit on class with the kids so they can have their lunch hour, which is their lunch and recess, so they can talk to one another and it's supervised and monitored, where they can ask questions and get to know their classmates a little bit. And I just appreciate so much the teachers that my children have that are just doing their best to make everything work. And it's such an unprecedented time that nobody was prepared for, I don't think. So we do Elf on the Shelf right now. There's so many Christmas activities going on. It's just, I mean, it's, it's exciting. Everything, every day there's something new. I mean, the teachers are just doing a great job. I feel like there's benefits. My kids are learning to be more independent. They, what was easily communicated through speech in the classroom with their teachers, if they have a question, they have to sit down and organize their thoughts, complete sentences to communicate what they're trying to convey to their teacher. I feel like they're learning to do that at a younger age because they have to. This is the environment that they're in right now. I feel like it's teaching them more responsibility, more maturity. They have iPads. They have to have them charged. We set up everything the night before so that in the morning, they're ready to start. Everybody's device is charged. They've got, they know what they start with in the morning and they have it sitting out, ready to go. I mean, as a parent to, for students who started out in the Click environment this, I just, I want to personally thank all the teachers, the administration and the staff for all their hard work because it's definitely working and my children are thriving in your environment and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hamlin. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Adams and I'm privileged to be the principal at Hedgesville Middle School. And I'm going to talk to you tonight along with, I have one of my two fantastic guidance counselors, Arlen Riggs. And then I also have Dana Phelps, who is a member of our LSIC and she also runs the Hedgesville Public Library. And we have developed a great collaboration. Also, I want to thank Melissa Holland for being our clicker here with the PowerPoint presentation. So thank you, Melissa. Hedgesville Middle School currently has seven hundred and sixty-three students. Sixty-one percent of our students are brick students. This is a total of four hundred and sixty-three students. Thirty-nine percent of our students chose the Click pathway, which is three hundred students. There was a large turnover of students at the first nine weeks marking period. Many Click students wanted to return to brick. And then there was a large number of brick students who chose to move to Click because of our rising positive COVID numbers. We spent a great deal of time at the start of the school year, setting our students up for success. Our students follow an A-day and a B-day schedule. A-days are the odd class periods and a homeroom period where students complete Oveius bullying prevention lessons and they also complete advisory lessons. Advisory lessons are geared toward helping students be prepared to choose their career cluster when they sign up for high school classes in the eighth grade. During the homeroom period, students also complete remediation or enrichment activities and tier-two and tier-three interventions if they are needed. B-days are even-numbered class periods. As you look at the chart, note that each class period is coded with a different color. This makes it much easier for students to know what class period they should be logging on to. When students log on to Schoology, they go to their courses page where again, everything is color-coded. You can see there are seven class periods. You also see the homeroom period in gray. There is also a listing for their guidance counselor. There is also a listing for their guidance counselor. On this example that I'm showing you, you see two orange color-coded classes. These are Unified Arts classes where the students rotate every six weeks. The students know who their specific teacher is. So for example, this student has already completed art class and is now taking health class. And actually, this Wednesday, this student will move on to Intro to Foreign Language. The example that I'm gonna talk to you about is First Period. First Period is the red-colored class. And so on A-Days at eight oh five AM, the student would click on the red course. If you look on the left-hand side of the page, the student will click on Updates and easily be able to find the Teams meeting link for First Period Math class. If you look at the right side of the page, you will see how the student and the parents can look under Materials. The Materials tab will have all of the information for one week listed in a folder. The most current information is listed at the top. This example shows all of the work from the first nine weeks at the folder all the way at the bottom of the page. Then you will see the work for the second nine weeks labeled by week. The most recent week's information is located at the top for the ease of access. The weekly folders include bell ringer questions, PowerPoints, videos, daily agendas, and anything else needed for the class that week. As we turn to our strategic plan goals, the first goal focuses on academic achievement. We are using the two thousand nineteen West Virginia General Summit of Assessment Scores as our baseline. Our average in English Language Arts was fifty-four percent and our goal is to increase by ten percent to sixty-four percent. Our average in mathematics was thirty-five percent and again, our goal is to increase by ten percent to forty-five percent. At the start of the school year, our students took the STAR assessment. You can see the results in the middle of the page. Our average in ELA is fifty percent proficient and the average in math is fifty point six percent proficient. To the far right, you will see information on the IMAs, which stands for Interim Module Assessments. These were given at the end of the first nine weeks. The IMAs test students on content standards that were learned during the first nine weeks. But they are also formatted as practice test questions similar to the questions that students will see on the end of the year assessment. In English Language Arts, sixty-one percent of our students were at or near proficiency at the end of the first nine weeks. In math, sixty-seven percent of students were at or near proficiency. Some of the strategies and programs that we are using at HMS are Data Teams, our Interventionist, iXL Math, Admentum Exact Path, My Right, and Gizmo's Virtual Science Labs. Our next goal is to increase the attendance rate of chronically absent at-risk students by four percent annually, which will result in a decrease in truancy. On the left, you can see our overall daily attendance rate, which was at ninety-seven point nine four percent in November. Our chronic absence rate is currently three point five two percent. This is obtaining our goal of a chronic attendance rate below thirteen point three two percent. Some of the strategies we are using to improve attendance are talking individually with chronically absent students prior to the school year beginning to discuss a plan to ensure school attendance. We work with students in small groups through our Guidance Department. We are developing a buddy system with friend encouragement and team teachers are mentoring our students. Discipline this school year has been significantly lower due to students moving in pods and also the amount of remote learning that is taking place. To date this school year, we have only had seventeen referrals and eighty-seven Nest Notes. Nest Notes is our positive behavior support system that is used by staff to document minor infractions and our communication with parents. If students receive less than three Nest Notes in a nine weeks marking period, they are rewarded at the end of the nine weeks. Mrs. Smith, our Discipline Assistant Principal, monitors Nest Notes and attempts to intervene with students who seem to be having problems by having informal conversations with them. Another way to recognize and reward students is our Excellent Eagle Awards. Teachers may nominate students who are doing a great job and Mrs. Smith then calls or emails their parents explaining why they received the award. Students are then entered into a monthly drawing for a Dunkin' Donuts gift card and the winner gets to thank the teacher who nominated them by also giving them a Dunkin' Donuts gift card. Now I will turn it over to one of our two HMS Guidance Counselors, Ms. Arlen Riggs. Ms. Riggs will be addressing the social and emotional needs of our students during this difficult school year.
She's on mute.
Ms. Riggs, you're muted.
Sorry, it's my first time. Okay, hi, thank you, Mrs. Adams and hi, everyone. Sorry about that. Uh, so coming into this year, we really wanted to focus on the social and emotional needs of our students um, and create an environment where they can learn and which they feel safe and supported. So best practices were really centered around relationship building, equitable access to education and building on strength to the school community that already exists. So here at HMS, we provide various opportunities for students to do this. Um, our teachers have specific, our teachers specifically have always done a really good job at making sure students complete the advisory and OVAUS lessons each week. So this year, we are taking it a step further and supplementing the advisory lessons with additional and more relevant content. So this could be uh, some TED Talks, some educational videos, or even new evidence-based lessons on similar topics. We're also updating and creating our own OVAUS lessons and these are pushed out each week for our teachers to, to deliver to our students. Um, all of our students have been able to participate in school-wide prevention programs and assemblies such as, you know, we had Red Ribbon Week, um, OVAUS Kickoff Week, and of course, the CFEW uh, week. And like other schools, you know, we've had to be a little creative when, when planning these events. But we've still been able to welcome two virtual guest speakers at HMS so far this year. Uh, for OVAUS Kickoff Week, we had Matt Wilhelm, which is a leader in anti-bullying prevention nationwide. He did a virtual presentation for us. And then we also had Hope Spriggs from Blue Ridge Community College. And she came out to talk to our students about options after high school, or virtually, I apologize. Uh, our wonderful faculty has also been writing kindness and motivational postcards to students, to the Brick and Click alike. This is just another example of how HMS is supporting and taking an extra step to connect to our students. And the feedback with that is amazing. Um, the students are so excited to get these, to get some mail. And so far, we've reached one hundred, over one hundred students, uh, with many more to come. So to better meet the specific needs of our students, we completed a needs assessment at the beginning of the school year and the results showed that twelve percent of our students were impacted by the pandemic. Uh, this could be housing, employment, uh, sickness, or even death. Uh, and then also, as anticipated, thirty percent uh, of our students reported feeling some anxiety and this was the number one reported concern. So consequently, these are the top reasons that our students have sought out uh, counseling services this year. And then of course, for these higher-risk students, additional support and community resources are offered to them and their families whenever there is a need. Uh, this could be through Project Aware and Extra Counseling Services, uh, Backpack Program and other food programs within the community and the McKinney-Vento Program or even the Clothing Room, whatever that family needs. Uh, and then lastly, HMS, we really wanted to help our teachers feel supported and have opportunities to heal so they could better support our students. And we were able to provide a self-care and anxiety management pres- presentation to teachers before students returned. And this just shared ways to manage their anxiety and kind of helped develop a self-care routine of their own. Um, so now please, I will welcome Dana Phelps from Hedgesville Public Library. Mrs. Phelps serves as a community member for our uh, LSIC uh, at Hedgesville, at HMS and will be telling us about SORA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riggs. Uh, I'm glad to be here this evening and I'm glad to be a part of the LSIC for Hedgesville Middle School. Mrs. Adams asked me to speak for a moment about the new opportunity for students to access public library eBooks from their Chromebook or iPad. In the past, a student would need to have a public library card to access public library eBooks and then the content was not guaranteed to be age-appropriate. The SORA application takes care of all that. Age-appropriate eBooks purchased by the Martinsburg Berkeley County Public Library are now available to students using the SORA app through their Schoology account. In addition to the eBook content during the pandemic and in response to our patron needs, the library has increased funding to our educational e-resources. On our website, we offer links to tutor.com and InfoBasis History and Science Online databases. The Hedgesville Public Library will continue to support the schools and families in the Hedgesville community in any way that we can. Every day, I see students in our parking lot taking advantage of the Kids Connect and the public Wi-Fi access points. Through our resources, the library hopes to ease the burden on teachers and parents. Thank you. And it is now my privilege as the parent of a Hedgesville High School graduate to introduce Mr. Ron Lyons, the principal of Hedgesville High School.
Thank you so much. Um, it is truly an honor to be here tonight, uh, to talk to you about our twelve hundred and fifty-eight students, um, six hundred and seventy-eight or fifty-four percent of which are Brick students when they can come to school and five hundred and eighty are Click students. And I wanna um, take just one moment, if I could, to um, give you some just absolutely wonderful news and I received this today, um, just, just a couple of hours ago. We received word today that Gabriella Carter, a senior this year at Hedgesville, uh, has just uh, been awarded the Quest Bridge Scholarship to attend Duke University. It is a full-ride scholarship worth three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, it's the third year in a row that one of our students has, has uh, received the Quest Bridge Scholarship. Of course, last year, Bridget Hall uh, received a full ride to Vanderbilt University and Sarah Brown uh, received uh, the Quest Bridge the year before to attend Haverford College. Absolutely amazing. And um, uh, so we titled our presentation Prepping for the Future in a Pandemic and um, uh, it, it's a hard act to follow the, the three schools that, um, I just listened to things that um, I think Mr. Tyson had the, a list of words that none of us knew, um, prior to March thirteenth. Um, and we're still learning new words every day. Uh, so it is, it is absolutely, um, it, it is an honor uh, to watch people as they problem-solve and as they create and as they get better each day at what they do. Um, speaking of getting better, we didn't have any new data in the SAT to share with you, but we did receive our ACT results. And our ACT results for, for uh, a composite score of last year, um, showed that we had uh, made marked improvements uh, in the ACT and in fact, um, Hedgesville High School scored over the West Virginia average of uh, twenty point nine and over the United States average of twenty point six. Our composite average was a twenty-one point one. Um, we are preparing uh, to take the SAT hopefully this year in April and we are uh, preparing even when we're virtual, uh, we are using um, the many new tools that we have. Uh, in mathematics, we are using uh, iXL Math and we are also using SAT-style assessments provided through the Khan Academy in both math and in English um, currently. Um, and we will spread those out to science and social studies after the start of the year. It is our hope that we will be able to administer the PSAT, uh, which is the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test on January twenty-sixth. That is uh, the hope that we can do that. Um, currently, uh, as our uh, forty-two buses that drop our kids off every day when we're in school, uh, currently, uh, ninety-six point eight-six percent of those kids uh, show up every day. Our chronic absentee rate has improved by over ten and a half percent. And currently, our chronic absentee rate is at eight point oh four percent. During uh, we, we've discovered that during this time of, of um, uh, being limited number of kids in our building, um, our kids really want to be there and they, um, our, our students have been absolutely phenomenal. Uh, obviously, they have many rules that they have to follow, such as following arrows on the floor and um, social distancing and wearing masks and all of that. Our kids have um, thrived uh, in, in, in that setting. They have um, not balked at all and in fact, uh, where last year, I believe we had uh, over seven hundred discipline referrals at this time. Now we have less, we have twenty-one. So um, there's, the, the kids are great and um, we, we, we miss them when they're not there, um, and, and we absolutely enjoy them when they are. Um, I wanna tell you, I have uh, three other presenters with me tonight and um, I'm gonna start with uh, Carissa Tress, but before I do, I wanna, I wanna go ahead and let you know who the others are. Um, uh, I have a counselor with me this evening. Uh, his name is Kevin Frankhauser and he is one of two nationally board-certified counselors that we have on staff and one of the four outstanding counselors uh, in our counseling department. And our counselors have played such a pivotal role this year along with our social workers in um, in being able to help those students uh, who truly, truly need it. Uh, and then finally, uh, we're gonna have a parent, uh, who is, who is much more than a parent. He is um, he is uh, our technology guru. Um, and uh, he has helped us in so many ways uh, and we are so fortunate to have him and his name is Sam Luzier. But before they come along, I wanna introduce uh, Carissa Tress. Carissa teaches English and Carissa is um, an absolutely outstanding teacher and she has uh, let up our BAR team, which stands for Building Assets and Reducing Risk. And Carissa's um, leadership in um, uh, of the BAR program at Hedgesville High School has been absolutely uh, great. Uh, it is, and, and um, we were fortunate to be in BAR under normal circumstances. Now, um, I, I don't know what we would do without our BAR program in the way that we have been able to uh, address student needs. So without further ado, Carissa Tress.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Um, as Mr. Lyons said, I am the BAR Coordinator at Hedgesville High School. This is my second year overseeing the program. In addition, I do teach English to freshmen and tenth graders. Um, so this year, as Mr. Lyons pointed out, BAR has taken an entirely new approach to the way we handle things. Education has taken an entirely new approach. To give you some background, the BAR program consists currently of three teams of teachers and each team is four teachers and then we also have a risk review group. So how this works is on a weekly basis, I host meetings with four teachers, so each team individually. And all of these teams have similar students within them. So we sit and we talk about each individual student and how they're doing from an academic So we sit and we talk about each individual student and how they're doing from an academic perspective, but also how they're doing mentally and socially. And all of the things that make a student who they are are things that we address in our BAR meetings. We're then constantly looking out for ways that we can help our students improve and continue to be successful. So we look at each individual and determine interventions that we as teachers can do to help them continue with their career here at Hedgesville High School. Our ultimate goal is not just to help them in their freshman year as they make the adjustment to a high school-level curriculum, but it's to also show them that here at Hedgesville, they have a foundational support network of people looking out for them and advocating for their success the entire way through, from the moment they start to the moment they graduate. That being said, in addition, we also have our risk review group. And this is a group consisting of guidance counselors, administration, and our social workers. And we also meet on a weekly basis, talk about any ninth graders who are considered at risk and who need additional interventions that cannot just be provided just by the teachers alone. So together with this entire team, we're able to truly look out for our students and make sure that they know that they have a platform of people that are supporting them and keep our parents informed of that as well. As of right now, national data for BAR shows that 42% of non-Bar students have failed at least one core course, whereas BAR students, that number fell to less than 30%. So on average, BAR schools across the nation see a 34.5% reduction in failure rate after one year of implementation. This is our third year of implementation, and we truly have seen the phenomenal successes and benefits that BAR has promoted for not just students, but for our team and for our teachers as it's created a more collaborative approach to enhancing student learning. One other thing that I'd like to mention before I pass it off is just that we have been working incredibly hard to make sure that we adjust to this remote learning. We're still holding our weekly meetings, we're still getting together and looking at ways that we can get in touch with students even when they're at home, whether it be we know that one teacher is getting in touch and we use that teacher as leverage to get in touch with others, or getting, going as far as reaching out to our social workers to make home visits for students we haven't heard from for a while. And finally, during the original time that we went remote back in the spring, the HHS BAR team was featured to all BAR schools in the nation for our meeting format during remote learning. We actually were recognized as one of the schools that continued meeting, even if we were home as teachers trying to figure this all out. We were still meeting, and the BAR program recognized how great our meetings were and requested that we record them, and it was sent to all BAR schools in the nation as a prime example for the way a BAR meeting should be held, even in the changes that we've experienced during the education shift in society today. The Journal has also recognized our efforts as well, and we continue to implement all of these approaches to make sure that our kids are successful. With that being said, I am now going to pass it off to, as Mr. Lyons said, one of our phenomenal guidance counselors here, Kevin Frankhauser.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tress. My name's Kevin Frankhauser, one of the school counselors at the Hedgesville High School, one of four. And we knew coming into this school year that one of our goals was going to be connecting with students that were not connecting with us. And what we've done, we've, we've made a lot of phone calls. We have really completed a lot of home visits. And thankfully, we have social workers, and they, at least last couple of weeks, have been making home visits every day. And counselors, we've been joining them on many of those. And like Mr. Kegel said earlier, that's, that's having an effect on getting kids reconnected with the school, the ones that, that have not previously been working in their classes. Just last week, I had to make a trip to Hayerstown for one of my seniors who was previously homeless over the summer. And, you know, COVID has affected many families and has forced her to move out and find a place in downtown Hayerstown. And so we had to go and work with, with her to find a plan to get her through school. So it's just about thinking outside the box, how do we help our kids? Also, we've partnered with the Lyons Club, and our social workers have been delivering mealboxes to many families. I think this week, we have nine families we're going to be delivering mealboxes to, and that's in addition to the backpack program bags that are getting delivered now that we're remote. These mealboxes contain milk, eggs, cheese, you know, basic grocery-type items. And that's, that's really helped out a lot of families, too. One of the other things we've done to try to, to help with our communication with families is we created a student contact log, which is one of the Microsoft forms through Office, Microsoft Office. And it allows administrators, counselors, and social workers to record contacts of each families we attempt to get a hold of through phone calls or home visits, and allows us to not interfere with each other. And also allows us to reach more families by not contacting the same ones over and over. In addition to our phone calls and home visits, we've really worked to make our website a one-stop shop for students. And so a lot of effort has been put into adding information to our webshop, to our website. We've created a senior button, junior button, sophomore button, freshman button, with the goal of providing everything they need to know for their age group in one spot. And so when we started the school year with the senior button, we made a senior video library, trying to cover topics, whether it be ACTs and SATs, applying to college, financial aid, requesting transcripts, all the questions that seniors have, whether it be tech school, military, and trying to prepare them for, for next year. So the counselors, we each made videos and created a library that they can go to and access whenever they have questions. We have also started doing scheduling videos and posted them within the sophomore button on our website with the, with the intent of walking them through the steps of selecting courses. Today, we just held a live Teams meeting for our sophomores who had general questions to try to help work through that process, and we're in the process now of setting up appointments with these kids. So we know this is going to take longer, but we, we want to make sure that we're providing the, the resource that they need and the, the contact that they need with us to help them through. Regarding other communications newsletters, we do a monthly newsletter, and we're trying to get as much communicated to parents and students and families as possible through in-touch messages in Schoology. Career activities, you know, once again, we're trying to find ways of, of working with our students to help prepare them for what, what they're wanting to do after high school. And some of the things we've done, each of us counselors have taken a grade level, and we have worked with English teachers to do career assessments through, whether it be CFWV and, or, or other online sites to help them do career inventories. At this time, I'm going to introduce you to one of our stellar parents, Mr. Sam Luzier.
Awesome. Thanks so much. That was cool stuff. I am a parent of three boys, Eeny, Meeny, and Miny, and we plan to have no mo. You know, that's just something I like to say sometimes. And they've all been in each of the Hedgesville school systems. So right now, my current students are in the middle school. I have one in the middle school, my youngest, and I have one in the high school, and I have one at WVU. So thank you, Berkeley County School Systems, I have one in college, and that had nothing to do with me. So Mr. Lyons wanted me to talk about my experience as a parent. The first kid that ever graduated that, that was mine happened to be in 2020. And I'm not the only parent that experienced this, but years ago, he pulled me in and said, "Hey, wouldn't it be cool if we, we did live streaming of the graduation?" And so I was like, "Absolutely," because that's right down my alley. I'm a tech guy, I'm a video guy, I'm an audio guy, and so this is really great. And so they pulled me in to do that, and we set it up and, and, and we put it out. We got a lot of great feedback of grandparents and family that couldn't be there because there's only so many tickets or they're out of state. It was just a really, really good experience, and we've done it every year. And so one of the things that we were worried about, or I was worried about, is, okay, what happens when it's 2020, my kid's graduating? I'm not going to be behind the camera, and I'm not going to be behind the technology. And so we, you guys were good about building teams in the school to kind of like raise up the students and, and allow them to operate that stuff. And then 2020 hit, and we realized, man, it's not going to happen the way it normally would happen. And so what happened is the creativity that came out of that, that school was great. They're like, "We're going to do this drive-by graduation thing, and we're going to livestream it." And they came out with all these ideas, they brought me into the process, and I was like, "Okay, this is really cool." And I was really happy about that because I wanted it to be special for my son and for his friends and all that kind of stuff. So what we ended up doing was, if you weren't part of it, there was a long line of everything from compact cars, lots of pickup trucks, SUVs, even a tractor. I think Jake Yates brought his tractor with the hay bale thing with his daughter and as many Yates as they could fit in that right there. So that was really fun. It just really provided this sense of community, like this is going to be the, the biggest thing that we've ever experienced for graduation. And so what we did before all of that is, he figured out how to get all the students that were going to give speeches, plus himself, in a space where we could film the speeches so that they could be handed out to students on flash drives and posted on the website. And we actually put, put it out on the radio. So we could turn on our radio on a specific station, right there on the property, and we could listen to the speeches that were happening, and that rolled right into the graduation. So as we were waiting in line and, and making our way up to the graduation, we got to actually hear, Jaren got to hear all of his friends' names popping up and, and, and all that kind of stuff. So by the time we got up to where my son got out of the truck and started walking along, I realized that, man, I'm 15 feet from my son. I would not have had a better seat if I was in that auditorium watching him get graduated. So we all have had our phones and stuff like that, taken video. It was just a really cool experience. And on the back end of that, Jaren got back in, in the car. We're all together as a family. We go around to the back of the, the school, and there's so many of his teachers just congratulating him, saying something to him by name. Of course, we still have our cameras rolling, our phones rolling, and they're saying great stuff to him, wishing him well, and we got all that captured on, on video. That's something we would not have got in a normal graduation. I appreciate the normal graduation, I think it's great, we'll probably go back to it. But I'm so glad, glad that, that the, the school made this extra special for my kid and so, and, and to all the graduating class. So the whole idea behind what I think was amazing about that is, a couple of years ago, Mr. Lyons and the team decided to make technology important before it needed to be. And so because they did that, because they, they didn't wait till they had to do something, we got to experience something extra special without a whole lot of stress. So I, I just wanted to share my experience and thank the, the whole team and the county for making a difference in my kid's life.
Thank you, Sam. I, I guess at this point, we'll open it up to questions. I, I think anybody who, who wants to ask any questions. I, I just want to say thanks to, it is, what an honor it is to work with such talented people each and every day, and that starts with Melissa Holland and, and her staff, and flows all the way through Tomahawk and Ty, and, and certainly Elizabeth. And, and so thanks, thanks to everybody for all that they do each and every day for kids.
Are there any questions from the board?
Murphy here. Just as Sam, I was, I was watching the graduates, I saw the wagon go by and everything. But as a board member, what was fascinating for me in the way we handled the graduation this year was not only see the students, but see some of the sacrifices by some of the families to help those students get by. I mean, how some of those cars didn't overheat in that long line, I, it was amazing. But it was nice to see the families behind the students who graduated. And you're right, it was a unique experience, and I agree with you.
I have a question. I understand, Mr. Lyons, I'll start with you, or any principal can take it. When we talk about the various statistics, are we, is that just the BRIC students and the days that were scheduled to be in school? Or are we also the CLIC students that are at the time that they're supposed to be attending the class?
Attendance-wise, that, that was both BRIC and CLIC for us.
A follow-up.
Assistant across.
Are the students doing the STAR test, the CLIC students doing the same thing as the BRIC? And then the spring, will, when we do the SAT test, will the, will all the students be participating? Or will it just be the BRIC students?
As far as the STAR assessment goes, our CLIC students are taking the STAR assessment at home. But due to our AV schedule, we are not having makeup days just because we need to keep focusing on the content standards. So if they miss the day that they're doing the STAR assessment, they do not make it up.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as the SAT goes, yes, we will have, on SAT day, we will, we will have our students in both BRIC and CLIC.
You broke up there, would you repeat that?
Yeah, on SAT, which will be in April, we will have both BRIC and CLIC take that. Right now, with, with all of our test prep, everybody is getting that, both BRIC and CLIC. And right now, everybody's, everybody's CLIC, so I hope that helps.
Okay, so the SAT will be given remotely to the students.
No, we'll, we'll have those students there physically, those that, that can come.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Thank you all very much. It's always great information that Hedgesville area brings to us, and you all do such a nice job. But thanks to Ron and Elizabeth, Melissa, and Mr. Tyson. Thank you all for putting all this together, and the presentation is just wonderful. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Yes, thank you very much, and have a safe and pleasant evening.
I want to thank our team, the counselors, the teachers, the parents in the LSIC that also participated and shared some wonderful information. Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else right now, let's take a five to 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and complete the meeting. We're going to step down for a couple of minutes. We'll be back about 20 minutes till seven.
Hey, Mart, mute your microphone. Mart, mute your microphone. Mute your mic, Mart.
You too. My friend's on there. You're muted. Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. What are you doing, getting an award or something?
What?
What, are you getting an award or something?
I don't know. I'm getting recognized.
I just got done doing a presentation.
I'm having computer issues. I have to do it on my phone.
Oh, okay. Right.
I gotta hold my arm up.
All right.
Where are you at?
School. I was afraid to try it.
Dogs. Dogs are fighting their rails.
Oh, no. All right, I'm going home. I gotta eat.
All right, later.
Just listen to it.
And we'll start with item number five on the agenda, which are the recognitions. And the first one was student recognitions that we're going to do tonight. And the first one was Musselman High School, WWE volleyball championship, and Holly Kleppner is here to introduce the coach. And I think we have some players online as well. So Holly, are you there?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, board members, for inviting the team and Coach Martz tonight to be recognized for their state championship. But before I introduce Coach Martz, I just wanted to say, of course, we're absolutely thrilled and proud of the girls for their state championship. But I could not be more proud of the way they handled the season with the ups and downs with the map and the, you know, with all the issues that we've been dealing with trying to keep the kids in the building. They handled it with grace and maturity. And there's a lot of us could learn from the way that they were so resilient during everything. They practiced daily, not knowing if it was their last practice, their last game. And luckily, they, I know, are extremely grateful. And as we are that they got to play in the state championship and finish everything through. Coach Martz did an awesome job keeping the girls focused through everything. And, you know, he's been coaching for close to 20 years at Musselman, and I'm super proud to have him at the helm. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Coach Martz, so he can introduce the girls.
Sean, please, yourself.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for having us on. I want to just echo Mrs. Kleppner's words, super proud of the kids for their resiliency all season long through these uncertain times. They were super consistent. They stayed the course and, you know, really showed in the end, just super proud of these kids. And they really made my job easy, day in and day out. I just want to introduce, we're gonna have just two of our seniors speak this evening, seniors MK Morris and Abigail McCoy.
Well, we just wanted to thank Dr. Murphy, Dr. Queen, all the board members and senior staff on behalf of the Musselman Volleyball Team. We're honored to represent Musselman High School, Brookly County, and the state of West Virginia as the 2020 Volleyball State Champions.
Hi, my name is Mary Catherine Morris, and like Coach Martz said, I'm one of the seniors on the volleyball team. Like Ms. Kleppner said, it was really hard throughout the season, but we couldn't have done it without all the support from the community, and especially the board office, and especially Ms. Kleppner. Everyone advocated for us and helped us in this process. Even though it was hard throughout the way, we wouldn't have done it without anyone. And we're very grateful that we did get the chance to compete and thankfully bring home the win. So thank you, guys.
Congratulations, Abigail and Mary Catherine. It's such a great honor to run a state championship.
Thank you.
But congratulations to both of you and the rest of the team. Job well done, and a great coaching job from Sean as well. So thank you all very much for representing our county so well. We appreciate it and wish you all the best of luck going forward. Either one of you want to play college volleyball?
I am not. I'm just gonna try and focus on my studies later on in college. But I am really thankful for, you know, my high school career that we had. It was a great experience and a great opportunity. And I'm really happy to end my volleyball career the way I did.
So Mary Catherine, where are you going to school?
I haven't decided yet. I'm looking at some schools in state in West Virginia and in North Carolina. My brother goes to school there. My grandparents live there. I haven't made the big decision yet, but I'm hoping to soon.
Abigail, how are you?
I'm not continuing my volleyball career in college, but I do hope to, you know, come back to volleyball, maybe coaching later on in life. I'm going to Shepherd.
Great.
University next year. So hopefully I'll be able to stay local and maybe help a couple teams in the area.
That's great. Good decision. Sean, is the rest of the team around there somewhere?
I think they're on watching, but they're not linked in to talk. No.
Well, congratulations to the whole team. It's a team effort, and you all displayed that and demonstrated that during the championship. So we appreciate you being here tonight and so proud of all of you all for another job well done. Soon as I shine, you have a good screen going here, so you have great talent.
We really appreciate it. Yeah, it's been a nice run. We appreciate the recognition.
Very good. Okay, item, the second one is the Native American Heritage Month. That is going to come third. And it's a couple of things. Davida Melander. So Dr. Walker.
Good evening. This evening, we want to focus and spotlight Spring Mills Middle School, who did several wonderful recognitions and lessons and curriculum activities for Native American Heritage Month. This evening, we have two educators, Davida Melander and Sam Sloan, who do have a presentation that they're going to share with us this evening. So I will turn this part of the presentation over to them.
All right. So I've never screen shared on Zoom before, so don't know if this is quite right yet. Does that look right? Someone tell me. Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. I'm Davida Melander. Hello, everyone. I teach eighth grade science at Spring Mills Middle School. And Sam Sloan and I work together, along with others at our school, to really bring, make something out of Native American Heritage Month. So Sam, you want to start us off?
Sure, I would love to. I'm Samantha Sloan. I teach seventh grade language arts at Spring Mills Middle School. Like Davida mentioned, whenever we met as an Equity and Inclusion Committee in September, we decided that we really wanted to celebrate Native American Heritage Month. So one of the things that we really wanted to do is celebrate the history, but also the continuing culture of Indigenous peoples in North America. And we especially wanted to show students that this is a living culture and not just hair, not just history. It was designed to spark conversation. And it was also supposed to maybe educate the students about something that either they didn't know much about, had not learned much about at all, or something that maybe they'd even had some misrepresentation of that they had learned in the past. We did this, we took a three-part approach on how we wanted to teach this topic. We created a PowerPoint. We made a display, and we also purchased books by Indigenous authors about Indigenous people to share with students. We're going to discuss and share a summary of each of these three parts with you this evening. To start off with, I'm going to start off with by talking about the PowerPoint, which hopefully you can see on your screen. This is not the complete PowerPoint. What we have here is just a selection of some of the slides. We designed the PowerPoint to be incredibly user-friendly, to be flexible for teachers and for students, depending on what the situation was at the time. We also, again, wanted to make it focus on contemporary issues. So just talking a little bit about the way that it was set up. We set it up, so it started off with an introduction video to tell students a little bit about what this was, a way for us to start conversations, a way for us to educate ourselves, a way for us to be learners. It was also telling them what it was not, which it was not supposed to be comprehensive. This is definitely a starting point. And I did make sure to highlight in this, too, that we created this as learners, not experts, where we were trying our very best to do research from reputable sources and create this PowerPoint that would be an accurate representation. But we also did invite feedback on it, where if anybody saw that there was something that maybe needed to change, or they wanted to add on to, we did welcome feedback from both staff and students. So what you see on your screen right now, just as a sample, is kind of the way that we set it up. There would have been a guiding question on a slide before where it might have said something like, what is a misconception, what does the word misconception mean? What is a misconception? And we would talk about that with the students, whether that was virtually or that was in class. And I did have a chance to talk about this particular part with my students when we were still brick. And they did have an idea what a misconception was. And then we watched this video that Teen Vogue put together. It's a pretty current video where they were talking a little bit about their experiences and some misconceptions that people have about Native American people. And the kids were really, really sucked into this because it was featuring people around their own age. It was current, and it was about a topic that some of them knew a little bit about, and some of them did not. And afterwards, then, you'll see on the bottom part, this was the follow-up slide, where we talked a little bit about some of the misconceptions that they discussed, that they showed in the video. And the kids were pretty eager to talk about it. I wasn't sure if they would be, but they were. You know, they wanted to talk about some of them, maybe that they'd never heard of before, some experiences that they had had, and it did connect it to their own lives. Other sections, you can see on your screen now, again, this was not the actual PowerPoint. These are just some sample slides. We tried to also do a wide range of topics related to this, so that teachers could maybe pick something that was set up for their subject area, and also that it could be taught over multiple days. Like you could teach like a section per session, depending on how much time that you had during your class. depending on how much time that you had during your class, your core time to do that. So what you see on your screen is a selection of some of the part of the notable Indigenous Americans that we talked about. We had a section with athletes. You can see Jim Thorpe there up in the corner. Writers with Joy Harjo, who I'll come back to in a minute. And a big section that we did on scientists, mathematicians and engineers that you can see over towards your right. I did the part, well, I did a lot of these with them actually, but the Joy Harjo slide, I think this was a good example of highlighting contemporary Indigenous Americans. Joy Harjo is our current U.S. poet laureate. She is a member of the Muskogee Creek Nation and she is actually the first Native American U.S. poet laureate that we've ever had in our history. And the kids were very interested in that. We listened to an interview of her talking about her position as the U.S. poet laureate and they were curious about what that meant. Then we also watched her give a reading of one of her poems. And the follow-up slide to this was we used that poem as a mentor text and then they came up with writing some lines of a poem of their own modeled after hers. And they were willing to share, which again, I was pretty excited about. So we tried to tie in again, things that would be useful to teachers in many different content areas. And to be flexible. This is just another section and you can see in front of you, this was about activism. We've specifically focused on the Dakota Access Pipeline, just to show again, like current events, things that are going on now. One of them was what is this? It was the opening slide. There is a book, We Are Water Protectors, which came out in 2020 that was written by Carol Lindstrom, who is a member of the Anishinaabe tribe, and I think I might have messed that up, even though I practiced it ahead of time. And then she gave an interview afterwards about her inspiration for this book and what this book meant to her and people, Native Americans across the country. And then up in the top, this is where I tied in music, where this was a song that was written about those protests and it was filled with photographs from it. Again, just to bring in to students, it's not history, it's a living culture. There are things happening right now. And again, here's some more ideas that people could do. We tied in artwork, dance, the importance of dance and different types like that. Cultural misappropriation, all kinds of different things were in here that teachers could use. We tried to make it a, an educational tool. We did ask that teachers show the, like I said, the introduction video. But then after that, they really could have picked and choose what would fit. Pick, they could pick what fit in with their time limits and also their subject areas. This also tied in with the display that we did, which Ms. Melander is going to talk about next.
Thank you, Sam. All right, so what you'll see now are just some pictures from, well, at Spring Mills Middle School, the library is like physically the center of our school and has all these lovely outward facing windows. So it's a really great place to display something and really, you know, have a theme for the school. So we did that. So you'll recognize a lot of these pictures from the presentation part of this slide, because we really wanted to make this display something that would grab students' attention. That way, you know, when they saw these faces again in the presentation, they'd be like, oh, I've seen that. I saw that in the hallway, you know? So they're making that connection. Even if, you know, they didn't stop and read it, it's still something familiar to them. You know, so we have, you know, Joy Harjo right here. We have our scientists. We have, you know, writers and athletes. So we really wanted to, you know, get as many faces up there as possible. We also used our long hallway. So we just have this huge row of windows. And we covered these windows, as you can see in the picture down below, with these posters to display the names of every single federally recognized Indian tribal entity in the United States. So this is like over 600 names. And I wanted it to like really like strike students like, whoa, what is, what are all, what is all this? You know, and then as they come a little bit closer, they can like see all the names of all these different tribes. And then on either end, we also had a little bit of artwork. So you'll recognize this piece from the presentation earlier. And it's showing, you know, all these place names in the United States that we get from Native languages that, you know, we don't necessarily think about all the time. Another part of what we did with Native American Heritage Month is we got a lot of support from our staff at school. And they allowed us to set aside $500 of faculty senate money. And with part of that, we purchased over 30 new titles to put in our library's collection of books that are about Native American people by Native American people. Because that kind of representation coming from within a group is the best kind because it's authentic. And these represent like all sorts of books. So there are print and digital titles, so students can read some of these at home, even though we are all remote right now. There are picture books that teachers can use as mentor texts to, you know, engage students in a new topic. And we also have chapter books. So there's something for all sorts of different levels and all sorts of different topics within this. The impact that this had in our school, we have three quotes here from some different teachers on our staff. This first one, it's not from me, but it's similar to the experience I had with my homeroom. So I shared the presentation, well, I'll read her quote. I have a Click Home Room and I shared the presentation at Core with them. They seem to really enjoy learning about Indigenous cultures and it sparked a lot of discussion. We had a lot of comments about the display and how it impacted people. The pictures displayed were beautiful. Several of the people featured were from my home state of Oklahoma. I use the posters as a talking point to students when talking about Indigenous people in regard to a Thanksgiving lesson. We were talking about the Wampanoag tribe and how they helped the pilgrims in the beginning. We had a discussion about what it meant to discover and to claim new lands. I used an analogy of me coming to a student's house and then discovering and claiming it. So it really gave teachers a jumping off point. And in this last one, one of our teachers, you know, as we're teaching remote, teachers who are also parents bring their students into the building and she brought her two little ones into the building and they were, you know, so excited and curious about like, what are all these words up here? So it really sparked a conversation within their family as well. So. So Sam?
Yeah, we're pretty much done, but I just wanted to kind of end with a quote that was one of the things that inspired me as I was working and Davida, as we were working on this together, which was great to collaborate with somebody outside of my subject area and grade level. But it's a quote by Maya Angelou and she just said, do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better. And that's what we're trying to do with this work. So thank you very much.
Dr. Walker, you still there?
I'm still here. Thank you, Davida and Sam, for your hard work in Spring Mills Middle School for involving and supporting the work that they've done. Thank you, board members, for your time today.
Thank you, Davida, and thanks, Sam. Appreciate the nice presentation about Native Americans. So thank you so much. Item number two under recognitions is the caring educator and acting principal Chad Pence at Berkeley Heights Elementary School is going to present the recipient of that award from Chad.
Hi there. Thank you, Dr. Queen. I appreciate it. Good evening. I am Chad Pence, Principal at Berkeley Heights Elementary School. I'm here tonight on the behalf of an educator whose passion for education and her students continues to impress me more and more each day. And that individual is Joanne Pritt. She is a second grade teacher, faculty, my faculty senate president, a mentor. She has been a team leader, a member of our school's PBIS team and attends numerous professional development trainings to increase her teaching effectiveness. She implements the newest teaching techniques and does what is best for students to maximize their learning, which is very, very vital in any year, but even more so this year. She is in her 16th year of teaching, her 10th at Berkeley Heights Elementary School. She is not afraid of technology at all, which is great. And she has been a huge, huge asset in helping our teachers and our staff with Dojo, Schoology, any learning program. She is not afraid to figure it out her own, ask or look it up on Google or YouTube. Joanne is willing to go above and beyond for our staff, our students and our parents. Whether that's late night phone calls, whether she's making them or receiving them, answering messages, making house deliveries, you name it, she's probably done it for her families and students. It is evident from the minute that you would walk into her classroom or if you log into one of her virtual sessions, that her students respect her, that they love her and she's a top-notch teacher. For this meeting, I simply asked her last week, hey, can you attend the board meeting next Monday with me? And without hesitation and without really any, any questions, she just said yes. So I'm not sure if she expects what's going on tonight or not. But she is a dependable person. She's always going out of her way for others and I am incredibly, incredibly grateful and privileged to work with Joanne. Joanne, for your dedication and commitment to the students of Berkeley County, it gives me a great honor to present you with the ACE Award for being a caring educator. And I will present you with that plaque tomorrow morning at the building. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Joanne. Thank you for 16 years of service to Berkeley County Schools and 10 years at Berkeley Heights. You weren't just a good teacher this year, you've always been a good teacher and Chad has recognized you and want to congratulate you for being singled out as the ACE Award for this month. So congratulations, dear.
Thank you. And it's been 16 years at Berkeley Heights. I've been at Berkeley Heights my entire career since I've come to West Virginia.
Excellent. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Dr. Murphy and board members.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne. Item number six on the agenda is the citizens forum and they want to sign in or sign up to speak at citizens forum. So we've got item number seven, which is the consent agenda. And that we have the minutes of the regular meeting and the special meeting on November 20th, the regular meeting on November 60. We have two past volunteers to approve, two student transfer requests. We have seven budget transfer requests and 20 budget 20 budget transfer requests and seven budget supplement requests. And we need to approve the payment invoices and the payment of bills for the month ending November 30th, 2020. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Moved. Second.
Motion by Dr. Gilfman, a second by Mr. Ecker to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Dr. Queen, on consent item 7-7, the vendor payments, I have to retract my vote due to conflict of interest with deployment with River Riders Incorporated.
So noted. Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Aye, unanimously. Item number eight on the agenda is the monitoring items. The first one is the instructional improvement grants.
Thank you, Dr. Queen. Each year, for a while now, in our F7 budget that's been voted approved, we have set aside funding for what we, for what we title Berkeley County Instruction Improvement Grants. Teachers are in information about this grant. They are also sent a fairly simple application to fill out. And what we are asking are for projects that would help improve instruction in not only this year in the classroom, but also in the click environment. This year, again, I think because of the situation, a number of grant applications were down, but actually the quality of the applications were still were still very, very good. So we had 122 grant applications. There were 84 projects that were awarded. Our budget was for $40,000. But as we, as the committee, nine Berkeley County school teachers looked at the request, they had some additional grants that they wanted, that they thought were worthy of recommending. And we were able to come up with an additional approximately about $1,573 to, to award those. So there was a total of $41,573 and 61 cents that were, that were approved. Just some examples of the projects that were selected. And as you can see there, a lot of the, a lot of the grants were also were involved in reading, but it also includes resources for brick and click students. Reading libraries for books for first grade small reading groups. A lending library for books for families to use at home. You also developerism and dance skills at the primary level. As the worm turns, which was a project where the classroom, the science classroom, where they're going to watch larva develop into a butterfly. Sciences everywhere, which involves six optical microscope scopes, over 100 finds. Digital map, particular ideas. At the intermediate, our special needs, out of this world sensory room. It involved resources for a sensory calming room to help with assisting with self-regulation of behaviors and motion. STEM kits, a poetry library, a robotics club, regressive intermediate for hex bots, bots and ozbots in bringing music and fine arts into a classroom set of youth lately stuff to promote music. It's middle school art supplies for remote learning that we're able to send home to students with those supplies. Classroom skeleton. I thought that this was an interesting one, a book walk and story walk where they actually put up signs and posters about books and stories to read. And that's in the hallways and then it gives information for students how they can actually hear those books for them to be able to read, the ones that they're interested in. The Holocaust, you know, reading. Putting arts into language arts where have literacy books connecting art with, with the literature. High school, a two models that include models with the brain for stage vertebrae, the muscle hip, a working knee, a working foot and ankle, working hand and wrist and working shoulder. That can be not only by our anatomy classes, but also with our P.E. classes. That, again, ROC request was for a robotic kit. Some of the high school funded funds for resources for STEM makerspace lab. From practice. At home for practice. Again, those, those were approved, the checks were distributed. We discussed it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilfman.
And congratulations to all the teachers who received the awards. I think there was 89, what was it?
Eighty-four projects.
That's great. Congratulations. Make a difference in kids' lives. It's great. Okay, the second monitoring item is a special education update. Mr. Derry and the shot test to see.
Good evening, distinguished board members and Superintendent Murphy. I hope that we're, we're hope to entertain you a little bit and also give you and also give you some updates tonight. First thing I would like to talk to you about is if this, you remember that Berkeley County Schools went through an audit process last year. And what we were wanting to update you about tonight is where we are at in that process. Okay, the first three topics that we want to talk to you about is an update of the area of focus for continuous improvement, our PERC update, and an update of the Special Education Action Plan and Strategic Plan Goals. This was developed, these areas of focus, to ensure high-quality teaching and learning experiences for all our students throughout our district. And Berkeley County Schools seeks to ensure continual procedural compliance with the state and federal laws and policies of best practices while creating excellent educational opportunities for students to thrive. The four areas that we had targeted during this audit are the ones in front of you. Student assistant teams, IEP monitoring and compliances, ensuring a high quality of continuum services for all students, and verifying and documenting provisions of services. So just to kind of let you know where we're at in that process, the focus area number one was student assistance teams. And we actually had staff development around this, a multi-tiered system of support. We had 174 special education staff complete the, complete the training with an average of 98% accuracy on the assessment given after the trainings. The SAT team, the training, 175 special education staff completed it with 100% accuracy on the assessment afterwards. What we still have in process is the educational evaluation process through SAT recommendations. This will be rolled out in January by our BCS psychologists, and we hope to see that very soon. Also accomplished under our area of focus number two, IEP monitoring and compliance, online IEP training, which is now complete, the Read IEP application is complete, and school administrators being the chairs of all IEP meetings, which we thank Dr. Murphy for putting that out for us in a memo to all our principals to make sure that they are following this compliance issue. Also, BCS, OSE, IEP review checklist form, which our coordinators created for our special education staff so that they can make sure that all of our IEPs in compliances. BCS Special Education Education Team, or SEET, will actually be having a meeting tomorrow to start our first audit. What we also have in process is how to implement an IEP. This will be developed by our special education mentor and our coordinators. Also, data collection is up and coming as well, and that will be developed by our BCBAs for January. At this time, I would like to introduce Tiffany Canby. She is a teacher at OVI who actually took our professional development. And I'd like for her to speak about that for a moment, please. Tiffany? Tiffany, you're not unmuted.
Sorry. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I said, as they said, I'm Tiffany Canby. I took the training from Tao Thompson. It was a good review for experienced special ed teachers and good information for new teachers that they could reference back to throughout the year. It lets the teachers know what they're doing right and what they may need to fix. And it was also good because with the documenting services this year, it showed everyone how to do that. It went through multiple parts of the IEP process, including the SAT, the student assistance team. It benefited students because it talked about teaching and the importance of the social emotional learning, which is especially important this year, and especially for special ed students. It went over self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making skills. And it also was a good review of co-teaching strategies that would benefit various students.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Yeah.
Michelle?
Okay. Hi, I'm Michelle Toss, and I will, and David, can you go to the, thank you. The next area of focus is area three that I'm going to go over. And area three had to do with how we can ensure high-quality continuum of services for every student in our program. And we talked about doing this. Our goals were, and I'll mention the four, and they were accomplished at this point already. The first one was to our reallocation plan. And that had to do with grouping our students based on their level of need, whether it be academic, behavioral, social, emotional, as opposed to grouping them according to their eligibility or diagnosis, which we have done in the past. So what we did was we opened up multi-categorical programs throughout the county, and what that allowed us to do is to serve students who have varying diagnoses, learning disabilities, behavior disabilities, intellectual disabilities, all within the same classroom because of their needs. So we did do that. We accomplished that. Our goal was to open up 34 multi-cat programs. And what we did was we accomplished 30 of those. Some of these classrooms were just reassigned. They may have been a learning disability classroom, and we categorized it as multi-categorical so we could meet the needs of varying levels of diagnoses. We also, in a few of our schools, opened up new classrooms. And we opened up programs in schools that had not had special ed classrooms for a while. And we opened these multi-cat classrooms where we could serve the students and keep them in their least restrictive environment and keep them in their home-zoned schools. And the importance of this is to allow the students to transition through school, pre-K through 12th grade, with their peers, instead of going to another school where they would not be peers that they would typically go to school with for their school career. We also talked about delivery of instructions for co-teaching and different strategies for using in the general ed environment. And we did that through professional development. Right now, I'm going to have Mr. Ryan Ott talk very briefly about a program, a multi-cat classroom that we opened in his school. And as I said, he is one of the students that has not had a special ed classroom for several years. And we were transferring kids out of his school and sending, sending them to nearby schools for programs. So we did open up a program, and Ryan's going to talk a little bit about how this program this year is positively impacting the students in his school. Thanks, Ryan.
Well, thank you, Michelle. And that's what it's about. It's about the student. There's a lot of moving pieces when it comes to educating a special needs child. And I am seeing big strides in our students. They're not self-contained students. They have specific learning disabilities or some mild intellectual disabilities. So they're in the classroom some, and then they're also working with a special ed teacher some of the time. Even on remote, I've had parents send some positive messages to our teacher, you know, saying, you know, "Thank you so much for helping." The individualized attention, and that's what IEP does, helps with the students, and all students have made some academic progress this year above our expectations, along with some real-life knowledge and applicable things that they have learned through our multicultural, our multi-categorical program. Another point I'd like to extend on, kids staying in their homeschool is very important, not just for their peer groups, but for their, you know, aesthetics, for their familiarity around the staff and, you know, feeling more secure, you know, they're getting off, they're going on the same buses and getting off the same school with their friends, and it's a social thing. And as a staff too, and it's nothing against the schools that we would send those students to, but, you know, we kind of feel a loss when that, you know, we work with that child and we see that they need a specific need, and then you're right, they have to end up going to another school. It's, it's almost a loss. And the others, and the, the good news about that is we know that they're going to good schools and still be in good hands, but you still have that, that feeling of a loss that you worked with that child for all those years, and you got to know them and the family. So that's been very key in, in our program. It's been a benefit for us and to our students. And anytime a school has additional support, it only benefits those students more, educating the whole student. You know, thanks to the parents, thanks to everyone. It takes so many people working together to educate a special needs child. I'm not going to name names, but thank you for everything, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Ryan. Also in goal or focus area three, again, still about ensuring the high-quality continuum of services. We offered professional development. Tiffany earlier mentioned Tao Thompson, and Tao Thompson was a contracted professional development trainer who developed several trainings for us. And our staff, all of our special education teachers, and I believe that some of our instructional aides have taken advantage also of these trainings. We had one on social emotional health. 178 special education staff completed that. And there was an assessment at the end of each one of these trainings, 91% accuracy on the assessments for social emotional health. We also had different strategies and methods for delivering instruction. 171 of our special education staff completed those trainings with 97% accuracy. We also had a training on functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans. We have initiated that, and that will continue throughout the year. We also will be revamping our FBA guidance documents. And we had trainings on developing, implementing, and documenting services. And for that training, we had 172 special education staff completing and at 95% accuracy. The implementation expectations that we had was around our Office of Special Education IEP Review. And that was forms it would be using, and that has been completed. And then also, at the state level, there is a supplementary service checklist that is completed in the general ed environment. That too, the training on that was completed. And lastly, again, more professional development. And this was focusing on area four, which was verifying and documenting the services that are provided to our students. We had professional development on documenting the services. Again, a professional development online. 170 special education staff completed that. And they did that with 99% accuracy on the assessment. And the expect, the, again, expectations were the review form, and that was completed already, the professional development on that. The verification review checklist, that is through the Department of Ed, that was completed. Service verification forms was completed, the professional development. And as you heard earlier, the SEET monitoring, which is our special education monitoring team, we are initiating that. As David said, our first meeting is tomorrow, and that will be ongoing, ongoing meetings throughout the year with our team of people throughout the county to monitor what is happening with our IEPs. Next will be Jody Westrop, our Parent Engagement Resource Center person, contact person, and she will go over what she has done thus far and what is she, what she's continuing to work on.
Juan, and I am Jody Westrop. Ongoing, I'm continuing to field calls, about 10 to 15 calls per week. I am taking, again, I do work, you know, nights and weekends. I was working with a family this weekend, so I am available to families really at any time. I also participate in monthly meetings for the State Department as well as parent engagement workshops as well. I'm also participating now with the Family Resource Network by attending workshops and Zoom meetings with them as also. Every Monday, I do help out with the curbside delivery, which I have to say I've been really enjoying helping them out with that. I also monitor the, our Facebook Special Needs page. And that is where, right now, because I can't host meetings in person, we're doing like quick tips of the week for parents. And we're also doing like monthly support meetings where we have, the quick tips will just be maybe like about 10 or 15 minutes. And then the monthly support meetings will be like a different topic every month. The other thing that we did this week, it was something very different. We were able to do this from home. We were able to have a Teams meeting where we were able to have parents join in on that meeting. Now, we are aware that parents are online, you know, with their kids during the day, and, you know, the times might not be the best for parents. So what I'm able to do is record that meeting and then load it onto my Facebook page where parents can go back and still have access to that training, which I feel has been really helpful for some parents. The next slide. Okay, what I have completed, I have completely redone the brochure because the past brochure said Parent Educator Resource Center, and we are now the Parent Engagement Resource Center. So I have distributed those brochures to every school in the county. I've also dropped them off to different agencies. And Michelle Toss and I actually went out last week, and we went to different like rental offices. I found I was getting some calls from people that were moving into the area. And I thought, you know what, this was a great place to really drop off our information because parents that are moving in, you know, they really need to know the different resources that are in the county and in the different schools. So I did drop them off there. I've also updated the resource guide for Jefferson, Berkeley, and Morgan County. So I have all updated resources in my office. I've also updated the mental health resources as well. I have presented on the autism and the BD academies. And I'm also helping out, or I helped out with the file audits that we had going on at the OSC. I did want to read a letter from a parent who just wanted to mention something about PERC. This is what she said. She said, "I have a child with special needs and have worked with the PERC program as well as the special needs department. I was pleased to hear that PERC would have a full-time employee, and Jody would be able to help more families like mine. On Friday, I was able to participate in the Zoom meeting, helping the helper live. We talked about cousin AB self-care, trauma, and compassion fatigue. I listened, and for the first time, I heard important information that I had learned from countless hours of research and classes that I have done. All of it was put together in an easy-to-understand conversation. I am proud of what Berkeley County is doing with the parents, caregivers, and families. Jody, Danny, and Ken are doing amazing things. I can't wait for the next session they put together." So I just wanted to share that with you all.
Thank you, Jody. So as we wrap up our presentation this evening discussing where we are, some of the additional areas that we wanted to look at, how we could strengthen and make improvements. One was homebound students, and we know that we do have some homebound students that receive special education services. And while we have implemented checks and balances as was recommended, we've also this year faced many challenges and had to find ways to remain flexible to serve our students that are on homebound and assist them with their needs, as many of them are working from home environments, even in different ways than they've worked previously. In past years, perhaps, they've always had a person come to the home, and that's a little different this year. So there has been some strengthening with the continuity of services, but also in looking at ways to get outside of the box to make sure we're serving all of our students to the best of our ability and to meet their needs where we find them. Another thing that we've worked on has been student behavior classrooms. And in schools where we have programs that exist, our psychologists and BCBAs have been working closely to strengthen those programs, as well as develop individual plans for students to make sure that we have a solid grasp of where those students are and helping them, especially our high school students. making sure that as they move and transition into post-high school lives, they're going to have every opportunity to be as successful as possible. Um, David, if you want to go to the next one. Okay, so one of the other things that we have discussed in the past with reviews has been our transportation department and just making sure that our schedules for transportation with students synchronize with school schedules. Mr. Kisecker and Mr. Ashton have worked with us very closely as well as with the schools, working since summer to help schools develop schedules that could meet the transportation needs that follow through. And Mr. Kisecker also, as we have prepared for a state monitoring that'll be coming this year, he's also helped us develop and provide timelines and schedules for the state monitoring that's coming up. So they've worked very closely with us this year, not only in making sure that our timings are accurate, but also making sure that the student needs are being provided for. And they remain flexible as always to support those students in the schools. The next piece that was sort of an additional area to focus on was communication. And we have begun, um, sharing out information consistently with the communications department. At least once a month, we're providing information for staff and for parents. So we have two different avenues of information to share. The other thing that we've done, and Dr. Murphy reminds us of this sometimes, is make sure that what you're sharing with people is what they want to hear, is what they want to know. So to that end, we developed a communication assessment that we shared out with the county just to make sure that we could get some feedback from the staff that we work with in different buildings at all programmatic levels, to see what they want to hear from us, what they need to hear from us. So that's one of the things that we worked on recently. And we're still working through the data to make sure that we're addressing the needs that, um, have been identified thus far in that survey. So the last thing we've done is create some protocols. And I think that in our buildings and our teachers and our case managers have always done a good job supporting our kids. But some of the pieces that perhaps we needed to improve or strengthen was making sure that we had those compliance and monitoring processes in place. So that that way we're making sure that there's continuity of services for students across the board. So those are some of the items that we've worked on recently, making sure that we have some self-monitoring tools for our case managers, putting protocols in place for administrators as a follow-up to that information. The seat team that I know David and Michelle have mentioned already, that's sort of a self-monitoring tool that we're going to use, um, throughout each school year. And then we do want to also implement one last piece. And that will be a walkthrough system for our coordinators to make sure that we're in buildings and, and watching and seeing kids and the engagement levels in classrooms. Um, with the current situation, we've had to wait to initiate second semester. But we have started and gotten the plan in place to move forward on that. So I do want to, um, also connect sort of what we've done to the strategic plan that we have as a county. So every department, of course, I, I know that we've sat and listened to the strategic plan goals that have been established. And the special education office also developed some of those. Two of them relates directly to what we've been discussing tonight and also to the county plan as a whole. One is that communication system survey that, um, we mentioned. That was one of our strategic plan goals, making sure that we're sharing the appropriate information. And then the other, one of the other ones was about the professional learning and making sure that we're providing opportunities for teachers to participate in professional learning. And also put in some type of system in order to gauge where they are. And I was really excited when I started reviewing the assessments to see that we were well above ninety percent in all the areas for the assessed, um, professional developments that have been provided. So that was, that was exciting to see that we've already started being able to make some of those connections with the work that's happened thus far. And, um, I just want to say thank you to our guests that we had this evening. We really appreciate them taking the time to share with you firsthand some of the things that have been going on in our office, maybe from a different perspective than, than ours. Um, I will say, I think that the people in the Office of Special Ed have enjoyed taking the time to kind of think through some new opportunities for us and how those will impact students. So with that, um, we're happy to open up the, uh, the floor for any questions from the board this evening.
What percentage of our students are on IEP in the county?
So we have approximately thirty six hundred students right now as of our last count. And somebody help me, um, David, with the math really quickly.
That's what I was working on with my phone here real quick.
Fifteen percent? Eighteen?
I think you're about. I think that's about correct.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm working on something down at the state level about, uh, county school boards, uh, being responsible for, um, achievement put out in the twenty-three, twenty-two. And I was just wondering, you know, we have the students who master, then we have the students who progress. And I was just trying to figure out, um, how you measure that middle that's not under the IEP, but not up in the mastering list. That was the purpose of my question. Second, just one second question. Are, are special ed students are attending school, correct? For the most part.
Percentage of them.
On the remote learning days.
Uh, okay, now like on red, are they going to school on red days?
They are, yes, they are at this point on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Last week they did not. Um, but every other remote week, they have been going to school Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Selected students, not every single special education student.
Okay, but what about the special ed students who are mainstreamed? But the mainstream is not going to school. What hap, are they, are those, uh, students going to school? And I mean, I know they still have their special ed class or two. But for the most part, they're mainstreaming them into the reg, into the regular classes. So what are you doing with those children when the main classes are on remote mainstream classes?
We, we consulted with, um, our Kim Crowell legal guidance when we were talking about what students we would, we would select initially to come back on remote learning days. And we have a set of guidelines, um, that we are following at this point. We are going to be making some changes second semester, but the guidelines have to do with if the students are on transportation, special transportation, and if they spend most of their day in the self-contained classroom. So the students who are mainstream, mainstreamed into the general education population for most of the day at this point are not coming in face-to-face during remote learning. They are continuing their remote learning. And there is a plan for every single student attached to their IEP. They are doing that through, still through virtual.
I was gonna say, the best way we can probably answer that, sir, to you is that it is IEP-driven. And that's probably our best way of answering that question.
Okay, now in that evaluation by Mrs. Coburn and, and her staff that we received in the, uh, I don't know, I get it mixed up, but, uh, where Dr. Murphy made the request for the, uh, assessment. One of the citations was when the IEP is modified. In the past, the modification didn't have the parent's signature. Are we now in compliance with that process?
So when IEPs are, are modified or amended, we have to have communication with the parent. But it's not a team meeting that has occurred. But we have followed up to make sure that when the meetings are happening in person, that all the appropriate people, and this was part of some of the professional develops, developments that we talked about, making sure that all the appropriate team members are present and signing the IEP, uh, attendance page. And or with our current situation, much of that happens electronically. But we have followed up with guidance on those things.
And, and the parents who are involved in those modifications, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, any other board members? If not, um, thank you all very much. Great presentation. Uh, appreciate the information. Thank you, sir. We appreciate the opportunity. Okay, item number three under the monitoring items is a textbook, uh, adoption, which is health, driver's education, art and music. And David Banks and Amber Beckman are gonna do the presentation for that.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your time this evening. We wanted to take a little bit of time. Uh, our role tonight is to present some information to you regarding the process of adopting instructional materials. In particular for this year, which is health, driver's ed, art and music. We believe our teachers are best suited to make these types of decisions, not administrators. It's our role to guide, guide them and ensure that policies and timelines are being met along the way. With that, I'm going to introduce Amber Beckman, who oversees the adoption of instructional materials with the Department of Instruction. He's going to take you through how this year went with all of its challenges in adopt textbooks and resources.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. And I'm just going to take a few minutes to review the process that we went through. These are actual adoption materials for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Um, the West Virginia Department of Education, because we could not complete the process due to COVID, um, and meet all of the guidelines of our current materials adoption policy, they gave an extension. They've actually not set a deadline for when this has to be completed. Uh, I'm eager to complete the process and I know that our teachers are eager as well. I had, um, as Mr. Banks explained, the four areas that we looked at this year were art, driver, education, health and music. Just a quick review of the process. Um, in January of two thousand twenty, the, uh, what they call a caravan, the West Virginia Instructional Resources Caravan came to the Holiday Inn and there were vendors available for our teachers to speak with about the materials that they had available for adoption. Um, this adoption was unique. It's not like what I had typically participated with as a principal, um, like an ELA or math adoption. There were very few options for vendors. Um, with driver education, we had two, we had one choice for driver education. We had two for health. Um, art, there was one and music, there were two. So it really doesn't give you a whole lot of choice, um, as you're looking at the materials. Regardless, we did have county chairpersons that attended the event, reviewed the materials, met with the sales representative. Um, then those chairpeople formulated committees and at least one teacher from each school in each content area was selected to serve on that committee. They met, uh, we had planned actually March thirteenth for these people to meet together. That was the last day of school before COVID. So we canceled those meetings, um, so that teachers could get prepared for online instruction in one day and be ready to have the ball rolling. So because that was canceled, we had to then transition to Zoom meetings and team meetings and emails. Um, but all of these people that were our chairpeople are fantastic. They are great communicators. Not only did they reach out to just one teacher, um, in their content area, they reached out to each and every one of them. So a, a big kudos to them for their hard work. Um, teachers then voted on the selection of their choice. Uh, with health, we did meet with the vendors. Um, Brendan Wagner was the, the chairperson. We met with the vendors via, um, was Zoom for, for that group and reviewed some of the details with the materials that we were receiving and the online options that we had. Um, but then the, the teachers did vote. The, the adoption materials were then made available, um, via the public. And on the next slide, I'll show you the link to that. Um, typically with a textbook adoption, you put all of the materials, all your textbooks, like at the library and the public can go in and look through the materials and look through the pages of the book. Um, the library was not open to that option. You can't touch items. And then once they're touched, they have to be put away for so many days before someone else could look at them. And, and I did not want to ask them to monitor that. So we instead put links to each of the textbooks. Um, students and teacher materials are available through the links. We have had no comments at all about the textbook review. Nobody has provided us with any comments from the public at this time. But then the next step is tonight, I'm here presenting this information to you. And also via, um, Zoom, I think the link that you sent out, via Zoom, we have a representative from each of the content areas that can answer any questions you have. And I'll introduce them here in a minute. And then the last thing that we're going to do is request that at the next board meeting on the twenty-first, that you all take this as a consent item and vote for us to move forward with, with the adoption selections that we've made. All right, here are the actual, it wasn't the next slide, I was incorrect. The materials that we selected, you can see here, um, the content area, the grade level. Because not every grade level, what was appropriate, best for music for our K eight students wasn't necessarily the same for our high school students. So at the K eight level, um, we have selected Quaver. And the title of the program is called Beyond Marvelous. We have been using Quaver as our music curriculum, um, from kindergarten through fifth grade for the last several years. It is fantastic. As an administrator, I love watching the kids interact with it. It's an online program. There's no textbook, but it comes with a ton of music that's available for the teachers. And they have embraced it and run with it. And it was so well received that our middle school general music teachers asked to have the same. Um, Art Davis was the selection. That's the publisher that we have selected. Um, Goodheart Wilcox is the health materials. And again, there were two options there. Um, McGraw-Hill was the other option. And the health teachers were really impressed with the, the variety of materials and the resources that are available. Not only online, they, they give continual updates with new information about health. For instance, a textbook might not have information about COVID. This particular company will send out articles and information to the health teachers with up-to-date, um, information for them, which they thought was a great benefit and I did as well. And the last one was, um, driver education, and that was McGraw-Hill. That was our only option that we had. Um, something that is different, it is kind of an old copyright date, which we were concerned that two thousand sixteen for a two thousand twenty adoptions seemed out of date, but it was our only option. And it does include an online piece to it, which we do not currently have. This is the link to the community review. Um, I don't know if you can find that and go to that link for me. I know that Elaine in Communications did send out information this, I think it was end of last week, um, to the community, reminding them that these materials were available and accessible. If it doesn't work it, it's just a quick link that has, uh, a link to the art, the Davis art. It also links to Quaver music so that you can click on and see the material. Sure. That's okay. It was just going to be one, unless if you guys would, who would like to see it, I'm happy.
The, uh, I saw a footnote, it sounded, I, I don't have it before me here, but you, you said you're going to buy a textbook for each, some of these classes, but give the classroom teacher a certain number of hundred You you said you're going to buy a textbook for each some of these classes, but give the classroom teacher a certain number of hundred, a couple, eight hundred dollars or nine hundred?
Yeah, that's coming up for me, Mr. Murphy. If you, if you get, that that's coming up, I think on the the slide after this one. So I I can, let me go through that piece of the presentation. And then if you have a question once I speak about it, then I will be happy to entertain your questions.
Okay, okay, I'll wait.
Oh, I appreciate it. If you slide on up, that looks like the comment form where they can make their comments. But it's okay, we can go on. All right, as far as, I'm sorry. Did you say something, Mr. Dr. Boom?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at, and this is what Mr. Murphy was referring to, the adopt versus purchase. Um, as we looked at the materials and and as we get into specifics of this, I would love for our representatives from the different content areas to answer the specific questions. But the state does require that we adopt materials. We don't have to purchase them. However, um, we are purchasing materials, health books for our middle and high school health curriculum. We are also purchasing books for the driver education program. And we are going to be purchasing a textbook, so an art book. And a, for instance, a Davis art elementary book that will be kept as a reference material in the class or in the school. Each school will have a copy of those books. And the reason why we're not buying class sets of it. Um, the teachers looked at the materials. Um, they looked at the content standards that were covered. They look at the resources that they already have available to them through the internet. For instance, with art, you can look up any artist's show, a plethora of of work that they have done. Um, and they felt that the utilization of the money for them to purchase actual consumable materials was much more beneficial. And the music realm, um, purchasing sheet music for guitar, piano, they they offer those classes now in our high schools. Um, getting sheet music for your show choir was a a much better utilization of money than having that textbook on hand. So what we are doing, we are purchasing a textbook for each of these content areas. That will be kept as a reference guide in case a teacher needs that reference. Maybe they are going to need a substitute and need something that is um more easily attainable uh through a textbook. They have that option there. But they they have voted to get that eight hundred dollars. And remember, and and this was brought up this morning as I gave this presentation to the senior staff. Our teachers teach standards. They don't teach a textbook. And I think sometimes we get hung up on that need for a textbook. Some teachers do rely upon that, but but they should be teaching a standard. And and oftentimes, um, you don't need a textbook to do that with the with technology as it is today. All right, our committee chairpersons, um, and with us tonight via Zoom are Kim Herman. She represents art. Um, she's a teacher at Spring Mills Middle School. She's fantastic. She has been so easy to work with. She's um graceful in all that she does. She listens well to the members, the other art teachers throughout the county. And welcomes their input and really, really is a an excellent communicator. With driver education, Kim Patz from Brooklyn County Schools is here tonight. Um, the gentleman that had planned to be with us, uh, his wife is not well and he was afraid to make that time for this evening. For health, we have Brandon Wagner, who is teaches at Mountain Ridge Middle. And again, Brandon takes his his craft of health seriously. He he takes teaching and and um the influence that he has and the impact that he has on students and their health. Not just their physical health, but their mental health very seriously and is an excellent representative for our health teachers. And last but not least is Andrea Haisley and and I, most of you probably know Andy from North Middle School. Um, he's the choir teacher there and she's been very instrumental in music instruction across the state. Hi there, and I think, um, just a quick reminder that uh big adoption is coming up. One that is, I know, much more pricey than the ones that we have just covered. Because of the extent and the number of teachers that we have teaching English language arts throughout the county. But that is, um, we're beginning to formulate committees now uh to begin to review the adoption materials, which will start in January. Now for questions and comments, um, Mr. Murphy, I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Okay, well, you you uh you answered it. I just, just one question to follow up. I know in art you go through a lot of consumable materials. And my question is, I I think you said eight hundred, eight hundred dollars if I'm not mistaken. Is this annual or just a one time deal?
This is a one time deal. I know that art instructor instructors do get um funding through their individual school principals. Um, that that's that's built into their budget. And Ms. Herman, if you're available and want to expand upon my answer, you're welcome to do so.
Well, if there are any more specific questions, I'd be happy to answer anything. I just want to assure you that we have a set of almost the exact texts that they're offering. And they're they're really full of the same material vocabulary and uh masterpieces and things like that. And we we have found um that we have been very creative with our um. You know, internet and and other sources. So uh, we do have a set of texts, every one of us, that are just the same as the ones that Davis is offering.
Thank you.
Any other questions that I can entertain, comments?
Thank you, Amber.
All right.
We look forward to approving this adoption though at the first assembly.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to item number nine on the agenda, which are the action items, which is B C S file J G H, which is Title Nine Sexual Harassment Policy. At least Gregory is here to present that to us.
Good evening, Dr. Queen and all board members and also Dr. Murphy. Uh, I am here this evening to reintroduce J G H Title Nine Sexual Harassment Policy. The new policy was up for comment and review on November the second, and there were no comments received. U S Department of Education released new Title Nine regulations that change the way school districts are required to respond to allegations of sexual harassment. Under advisement and counsel with Bowles Rice. B C S's policy, J G H and procedures have been revised accordingly to comply with the new Title Nine regulation. Which went into full force and effect on uh August, uh, on August fourteenth, two thousand twenty. The purpose of this policy and the administrative procedures that implemented is to secure prompt and equitable resolution of complaint based on sex discrimination. Including complaints of sexual harassment and violation of Title Nine and the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy two. And violation of district policies that prohibit this type of. Want to say that we did begin our mandated training one over the summer. And we are working to extend that training for all staff within the next month. Questions, I'll be happy.
No, thank you, Elise. I hear a motion from the board to approve Brooklyn County Schools filed J G H, which was Title Nine Sexual Harassment Policy as presented tonight.
I'll move. Second.
A motion by Mr. Beckwith, a second by Dr. Gilpin to approve all Brooklyn County Schools filed J G H Title Nine Sexual Harassment Policy. Is there any discussion? Are there none? Are there others in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I carry unanimously. Item number two under the action items is personal actions, Dr. School.
Good evening, Dr. Queen, Dr. Murphy and members of the board. The personnel actions dated for Monday, uh, December seventh are as follows. We have two new coaching appointments. We have one interim coaching appointment to make. We have two uh unpaid medic, two leave, unpaid, excuse me, two unpaid leave of absences. We're also extending one leave of absence. We have one resignation of a professional personnel. Uh, we have two new uh service appointments. We have two mutual agreements of service people due to vacancies that occur within the department and changing days there. On line number thirteen, we have a ratification of an unpaid suspension, and that is Kendall Barrett to December first. We have five resignations. We have two retirements of service personnel at the end of December here. We have one rescinding of a transfer because it was for second semester, they're going to stay where they're at instead of moving to the new location for second semester. We have eleven transfers of service personnel. Continuing on page four, we have one new service upgrade for obtaining your autism mentorship. We have four new substitute bus operators. Two resignations of the substitute list for service personnel. Three new substitute teacher appointments and two resignations. A total of forty three personnel actions for Monday, December the seventh.
There are motion from the board to approve the professional service coaching and substitute personal actions validated December seventh, twenty twenty.
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, a second by Mr. Martin to approve all the personal actions as presented tonight, uh, saluted December seventh, twenty twenty. Is there any discussion? Are there none? Are there others in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I carry unanimously. This brings us to item number ten, which is the board announcements. Anyone have anything from the board? If not, we'll go to Subington announcements, Dr. Murphy.
All right, I'm gonna bring up uh the screen here and. So the first item that I would like to touch on this evening is just thank all of our um presenters with the LSIC. I thought that was very helpful. I think it speaks directly to some of the things that are happening um in our schools. And some of the concerns I know that all of us have uh from uh board members to staff to families. Uh, and I just want to take the opportunity this evening uh to let folks know of the the variety of avenues that we currently have. Uh, through the technology help desks, the tutoring help desks and also interventions. Uh, we continue to have a focus on getting meals out to folks. And as you heard, this evening, attendance, we are making strides with, but also the social emotional supports. I know it has been a struggle as we have uh transitioned with the the brick and click model to having uh to be remote. Uh, and we are continuing to focus on how we can help. Uh, I know we've also had a number of parents uh reach out to us recently here. Uh, and we are uh trying to be responsive with that. But we've also found that we've been able to close uh various gaps, whether it be technology related, whether it be with school support. Uh, and principals have been very, very responsive with that in helping to close those gaps. And and they often just have uh times uh deal with uh, you know, just having um addressing communication or closing loops. Um, and so uh my encouragement is to continue to have this uh conversation about how we can address these issues. Um, you know, ultimately getting kids back in school uh is the direction I know the board is interested in, is what I'm interested in as well. But also doing that uh safely in today's environment. Uh, while there are many opportunities, I think, out on the horizon with the possibility of a vaccine. We are still some distance away from that, uh, and that will take time. So we need to be creative in how we address these things and also work with our staff and our families in doing so. Um, my invitation this evening is if you have ideas or you want to share things with me or with our staff, we are very open to that. I think um by talking about different options, I think we can find other solutions that can work for families and ultimately serve kids. I want to also remind us, we've got interim reports coming up here uh in the mid part of December. We also have our holiday break from the twenty third uh through uh January third. Uh, and um pictured here, I want to thank our presenters earlier who uh highlighted Native American uh month. Uh, this here is Spring Mills Middle School. Finally, um, January fourth is going to be our Faculty Senate and instructional meetings. So students uh will have uh remote instruction or asynchronous learning on that day, January fourth. And that is an instructional day. We also know there have been changes with the SSAC. Uh, Mr. Dillinger works directly with that as our representative. And I'm gonna uh pass the baton to him to give a quick overview of what's happening with uh winter and spring sports calendars as of tonight.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Murphy. Uh, in the middle of uh November, we were wrapping up the fall season. And it just started the uh, the winter season with some practices and tryouts. Um, swim had began practicing, girls' basketball at the high school level had started. And both boys and girls at the middle school uh level had began. And then right before our high school boys were started, governor made an announcement that the SSAC, which finished the fall sports season in their tournaments. Um, but announced at that point in time that the uh winter sports were going to be postponed. Uh, and they announced that January eleventh was going to be the start or restart for winter sports. So January, uh, as of now, will be the start or in some cases for winter sports. Um, with practices and tryouts, uh, all the, all the winter sports can begin on January the eleventh. First contest for swim can be on January the fifteenth. First contest for girls' high school and middle school basketball can be January twenty seventh or twenty second. Uh, first contest for wrestling, uh, is January twenty fifth and then for boys' high school, middle school, January twenty ninth. The way the SSAC has laid the calendar out, the month of February will be for the winter sports regular season. You, they beginning the first weekend in March, March Day will begin their uh uh sectional and regional and state tournaments for the various sports. Uh, the first weekend in March will be regional wrestling, regional well, girls' second basketball and uh. And for March thirteenth. Everything will conclude with our uh state uh tournaments. Uh, they've actually moved eight tournaments uh about three week wrestling will do. Uh, March eighth, twentieth, girls' basketball will be March thirtieth, thirty first. Uh, in boys' basketball, actually, girls will be March thirtieth all the way through April third. Basketball, April sixth through uh April tenth. During that time, uh, the first day for spring sports to begin practices, tryouts, March fifteenth. Way that they have uh laid out the calendar for spring sports. That's the month of April. And most of month of May for regular season. And then regional and sectional tournaments for softball, tennis, track, baseball. for softball, tennis, track, baseball will begin the end of May, the last week of May, which is May 24th, running all the way through to where state baseball will now end, which is typically June 3rd, 4th, 5th will now end on 24th, 25th, 26th. So that's, that's the change in the calendar right now for the SSAC. Good job, Murphy.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dellinger, and we'll stay posted as some of these dates may be subject to change. You heard a little bit about this earlier, and I just want to recognize a couple of individuals that were instrumental in bringing this about with accessing, access for our students here with some of the library resources. And it was mentioned during the LSIC presentation, but Karen Greenfeld, our very own Dave Kenny, and Bev Hoffmaster, because of their efforts now, our students have access to the public library's digital book collection through the Sora app, and also access to eBooks through Tumble Books. So one of the things that, I'm going to come back prior to the holiday at our next meeting, is to talk a little bit about how students over the holiday break, while I know we all have earned a rest, we also want to be focusing on reading and taking some time to continue to read over the holidays, and this is one avenue. So thank you to those folks for bringing that about. I also want to recognize our very own Dr. Justin Schooly. Dr. Schooly just completed the program through the American Association of School Personnel Administrators, and also then the, earned the certificate for Professional Human Capital Leader in Education. You know, human resources, as we all know, continues to be pivotal for all of us in public education today, and I appreciate, as I know you do, Dr. Schooly's interest in continuing to grow and expand his knowledge, and then also share that information with others in our district, as well as through his leadership in some of the associations. So congratulations to Dr. Schooly, and thank you for pursuing that professional goal that really benefits all of us. I do want to recognize the work of our outstanding communication team. They are part of one of our local public relations teams or affiliations here in the region known as Chesprah, and that's the Chesapeake School Public Relations Association. It's under the umbrella of the National Association, which is known as NSPR. But our team submitted a number of projects that we've worked on over the past year, and they earned two first-place awards and four honorable mentions, so I want to recognize Elaine Bobo, as well as Tabitha Porterfield, and as one of the members of that team for a while, also Kira Heck for their work. And these covered a variety of different campaigns and activities, from financial information for the levy, how we also are dealing with communication right now during the pandemic, also with video productions. So congratulations Elaine, Tabitha, and Kira for your work as well. That's all the information I have this evening. Everybody continue to stay safe and be well, and also, this is a, as we highlighted at the beginning of the meeting, a memorable day in our nation's history, and thank you to all those who have served our country in the past and also in the future to keep us all safe here and enjoying the many things that we have in our country. Thank you, Dr. Queen.
You're welcome, sir. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Gilpin, a second by Mr. Beckwith to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned.